...of the Elk Grove City Council and call to order the regular meeting of the Elk Grove City Council Wednesday, June 26th at 6:06 PM and ask the clerk to read the Metro replay schedule.
Thank you Vice Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel 14 on Friday, June 28th at 1:00 PM and Monday, July 1st at 6:00 PM. It is being closed captioned and it will be webcast at SACMetroCable.TV. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the city council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular notice agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the city council for more than three minutes. Speaker timer on the podium counts down the individual speaker time remaining will turn yellow after the first two minutes have passed indicating one minute remains to summarize comments. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please complete a speaker card, the blue cards that can be found at the back of the chamber, provided to the Assistant City Clerk prior to consideration of the agenda item. Thank you Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Now if we could have a roll call, please.
For the roll call, Councilmember Nguyen.
Here.
Councilmember Detrick.
Here.
Councilmember Suwen is absent. Vice Mayor Hume.
Here.
And Mayor Lee is absent.
Great, now I would like to invite all of you to join Councilmember Detrick in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hand over heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Vice Mayor Hume. As we go into the moment of silence, would like to close the meeting in honor of Sacramento Officer Tara O'Sullivan who is here in Elk Grove now. And there's going to be an event tomorrow starting to go through Elk Grove and up to Roseville and then back. So I'd like to close the meeting in honor of Tara.
Thank you. And so if you would join us at the beginning of every meeting, we begin with a moment of silence. Please join us in a moment of silence. Great, thank you. All right, do we have approval for agenda?
Move.
Second, have motion in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes. We have no closed session items, brings us on to Section 4.
And that'll be, first will be item 4.1, the Census 2020 Presentation and Proclamation.
Joined this evening by Judy Robinson from Sacramento County, Linda Cutler from Sacramento Region Community Foundation, and Tanya Krabchuk from the US Census Bureau who will be giving a short presentation on the upcoming Census 2020 work and our region's preparation for it.
Good evening and thank you for having us this evening. Stephanie, we also would like to thank you for attending our Implementation Plan Workshop last Monday and then previously Councilmember Suwen had been at our April 10th kickoff. So we have huge support from the city of Elk Grove already and so we're excited that you're entertaining the proclamation this evening and your city staff has been very involved with census efforts since last year. I'm Judy Robinson, I'm the Census Manager for Sacramento County. With me, we have Linda Beach Cutler, she's the Community CEO for Sacramento Region Community Foundation, our community partner. And then at the end of our presentation, we have with us our US Census Bureau Partnership Specialist, Tanya Kirchev. And if our Regional Program Manager from the state, Yumi Sarah shows up, she's also one of your Elk Grove residents and we'd like to introduce her. So just a little bit of, and we will be brief, but just a little bit of trivia. This particular, your council chambers are located in a census block area where 30.5% are Latinos, 22.5% are Asian, and 8.2% are Black. And many of the residents in this area are renters and many of them are also under a lower, or experiencing poverty. And we know this information from census data and that's just one of the many reasons why the 2020 Census is important. So I'm going to turn it over to Linda and then she'll turn it back to me.
How does this advance? Ah, great, okay. Well, I just want to join Judy in thanking you all for letting us spend a few minutes because this is such a critical thing and obviously I read the language you all are going to be talking about tonight and obviously you get the importance, it's clear from the language. But I just wanted to quickly kind of take it up a notch for a moment and explain why I'm here. The state is, as you know, this year has put more funds, 154 million, into the census which was not something that they did in 2010. They have recognized that the investment in this is critical and as a result, they have taken the state of California and put that into 10 regions. And if you look at the blue region that's up on top there, that is Region 1 and that's the region that Sacramento County is in. And that is the region that after working with Judy and Sacramento County so closely, we ended up getting tapped by the state to be the Region 1, what they call ACBO or Administrative Community Based Organization, which means that we will be doing the, working with, on outreach with all of those particular counties, mostly with Sacramento County however, because we're also under contract to Sacramento County. The mission is very straightforward and that is that we need to make sure that everyone is counted. And we'll talk a little bit about some of the challenges we think we're going to be facing. We know of course, again based on your resolution, that you know what the problem is. The underfunding affects federal representation, it affects federal funding which is so critical to what we do, and it also affects where businesses decide to put some of their operations. So if a region is underrepresented, that could have a significant economic impact as well. Some of the challenges that we're seeing is that this is the first time that it is going to be online. And that, of course, you can think about the areas within not only Sacramento County but up in some of those northern areas that I talked about of broadband access and the challenges there. Some of the distrust we see particularly with the federal government and the concern about security. And it's just, it's a very, we have a very diverse region, we certainly have a very diverse county. This is a very difficult slide to read, so I'm not going to try to take you all through. And I think the point that we're trying to make with this is that while we're definitely going to be in really significant intense outreach mode in March and April of 2020, this effort has started well back into 2018 and I have to really compliment Judy and the county of Sacramento for understanding the importance of getting this started. So what's going to happen when this starts, this sort of intense period that I just mentioned started, is that in March, we'll start receiving postcards about make sure you sign up for the census, here's your code to sign up for the census. Now that obviously implies that you have a home to which something can be sent, but this would be the core group that we hope will self-report. And then the reminder postcard will come in March, reminder letter and paper questionnaire. So luckily there is an opportunity for someone who is absolutely not willing or able to go online, they will still have an opportunity to respond on paper. So I want you all to be aware of that. The challenge is it's only, the census is only in Spanish and English, even though we know in Sacramento County, there's language access issues, 15, 20 languages that we're going to be working with some of the hard to count populations. So even though there's an opportunity to have a paper count, the language issue is going to be significant there. So when we talk about hard to count, there are certain characteristics and these aren't necessarily the ethnic groups that I'm talking about, but when you think about the characteristics of hard to count, Judy just mentioned some immigrants and foreign-born, limited speaking English speakers, single parent households, parents that are not high school graduates. You can read this list clearly. Ethnic and minority populations, renters and children, and I think what's, I've learned what was particularly interesting and troubling about the 2010 census is that one of the key populations that was undercounted was children 0 to 5. And that may be because of the nature of their family, maybe that they're living with grandparents, it's just, we don't know why, but they were absolutely undercounted. So when you think about the kinds of services that young, 0 to 5 require, to have them not counted is just a tragedy. Public assistance, Native Americans, et cetera, it's all here, but these are some of the characteristics. So how are we in Sacramento County, again with Judy's support and the support of the county, how are we going to reach out? How are we going to address these characteristics? How are we identifying hard to count in Sacramento? Since last year, well, you know, well back into 18, the county formed a government steering committee and the chair of that is Sacramento County and I know that you all are very active in that. And then we, with the help of the county and others, formed a community steering committee of which we are the co-chairs along with an organization called Sacramento Act which is a faith-based organization. They touch so many of those groups that we talked about that feed those characteristics. What we have done is then look, if you can look at these subcommittees, you'll see that they really do represent the hard to count populations that we're going to be looking at. So everything from healthcare over to those with disabilities, the Latino API, ones that we know will be difficult and I should have said earlier, Sacramento County is among the 10 hardest to count in the state and it's the 40th hardest to count in the country. So this is not going to be an easy thing, but I think we're structured and poised to do very well. What's interesting about this Complete Count Committee is that while some other counties like San Mateo in LA who have had lots of funding to do this early on, they may be ahead of us, but when you look at sort of our, the kinds of counties that are more typical of ours, this structure is being used to really as a model statewide because it addresses both government issue, addresses the community issue, and then there's this steering committee, the executive committee as we call it, that really is overseeing both so that there's been great communication. So what the steering committee does is we've developed and submitted a strategic plan to the state and again Sacramento's strategic plan was very thorough and again, was held up as an example for other counties, it might not be quite as articulate about what we're doing. We will be using and do utilize the county and state data. Judy just did just some fun facts on one census tract, but that's the kind of detail that we'll be going into this. And then the steering committee participates and creates events in key areas just to make sure that we are leveraging, one thing that's key, is we want to be leveraging events that are already going on in and among the hard to count populations. So with that, I'm going to turn it back to the local expert.
So what's really cool about this, and I just met one of your demographers this afternoon or this evening, is the state has created a hard to count map and the darker the color of the harder to count that area is. After putting together this slide, I also realized that as you zoom in a little bit closer, more areas become far more refined and this area in particular popped up as one of the hard to count areas that didn't when I was preparing this slide. But the important thing is that all of this information is available through census data, but finding it is extremely laborious. And so what the state has done is actually created a map, you can click on it and it's interactive and then it drops down and it provides you this information and also provides some of the top reasons why it's, this area has been deemed to be hard to count. We also, when we're not talking about census, also look at some of these as being communities without advantage. And so areas that, you know, we go in and we want to work with in assisting them and bringing equity into those parts of the community. So the terms are still interchangeable, the people that we're talking about are still largely the same. So there's a spreadsheet that actually, or a fact sheet that the state just finished doing, they had made them available for counties and now they also made them available for cities. The one that we've got up here is for the city of Elk Grove, so it takes a lot of the census data for the county and then really brings it down far more narrowly focusing on the city of Elk Grove. And this information is important so we understand who do we send into the different neighborhoods, what language is the predominant language is being spoken there so that we've got individuals with relationships with, and some of the trusted voices and messengers in these areas and that we can go in and we can speak the language that the residents there speak at home. This is going to be, it's a huge challenge already, there's a distrust of government and so we are leading and we set up the whole structure as Linda outlined, to be community-led with those trusted voices, with government support. And so as we talk about how are we going to be successful, we've outlined, you know, the five different Complete Count strategic goals that are on the screen, but it's very strategic, it's very creative, it's very collaborative, there is a seat at the table for everyone. And primarily again, you know, working through the public-private community partnership that has been created, we will be achieving success. And at the same time, whoop, went too fast, the schools are also going to be involved. Sacramento County Office of Education has been working with LA Unified and a couple of others in the state and actually creating a census curriculum that will be brought into the schools this fall for grades 5, 8, 11, and 12, talking about the census and how it also then integrates with, you know, typical US history and California history lessons. So we'll be collaborating with schools and having events at the schools, doing outreach and, you know, back to census nights and with tablets because you can complete the census online, offering assistance and folks complete the census, you know, at a back to census night or those types of things. So it's a big lift and how more can we get to success with the support of city of Elk Grove? So in working with your staff, they've identified facilities where we can put kiosks and questionnaire assistance centers, providing free booths and tables at events. So there's a big check mark there, so thank you for the space at July 4th and then also at the multicultural event coming up in August. Putting Census 2020 information on your website, pushing out messaging on social media, for those council members that have Facebook pages and do social media, we would love for these messages to be, we'll be creating these things as you go out and do speeches or give presentations. Folding in the importance of the census is going to be extremely important and the community has asked for the participation of electeds in areas as you have events in your districts and as you have other engagements that are coming up. And then providing the residents with the information on why this is, why this is so valuable. So here's some of the events that we're coming up with. In the near future, they'll be getting even more extensive, but I wanted to show off the Salute to Red, White, and Blue and the Multicultural Fair. And with that, any follow-up comment? Yumi Folly arrived, so I'm going to invite Yumi and Tanya to come up and just make a couple of, we don't really talk about the confidentiality and security because that really is a federal government thing. And Yumi Sarah is our Regional Program Manager with the state of California, so.
Hi.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Hi. Resident of Elk Grove, I think you all know me, and I also now work for the California Census. I'm the Regional Program Manager for the Northern California region, which includes Elk Grove of course. Thank you to Darren who's not here and also to Stephanie for joining our census events that we've already had. It's been great to have you here, have you there. I know you folks are all on board, right? And I see a bunch of young people in the audience and it would be great to enroll the Elk Grove ambassadors, youth ambassadors, is that who you folks are? Civic Summer, you need to get involved, to involve them all in census efforts as well. So thank you all for your support.
Thank you, Yumi.
Good evening, I'm with the US Census and I just wanted to highlight that the census is safe and secure. I know that there have been a lot of questions and controversy concerning the possibility of the citizenship question as well as security with being the first census that will be online. But every question is confidential, answers on each answer on the form is confidential, so that includes citizenship or otherwise, we cannot share it with any other government agency including the president and your answers are secure. So I just really wanted to bring that home. We can only publish statistical data, aggregate statistical data until 72 years have passed. So after 72 years, people can't access individual information with the idea that it shouldn't matter, it shouldn't impact you negatively after that time. And starting with that first postcard that folks will receive in March, there will be a number there and it is helpful if, when people are going online to have that number with them because it maps to your home address or to your primary address. However, it is not necessary. If you are away from your primary residence, if you have a few minutes and want to go fill out your census, by all means do that, but if you can, put that number along with your form. Thank you.
Thank you.
So again, thank you for, in advance, for your proclamation and your support of the census. Christopher has been awesome in representing the city. We're here to answer any questions that you might have and we're certainly available anytime going forward to assist as we can.
Great, thank you. I don't think we have any questions, but Councilmember Nguyen is going to come down and present that proclamation.
Great.
Can't leave, you gotta come back up here. I want to say a couple of words. Back in 2010, I was a part of the Census 2010 and 10 years later, the census has changed drastically, dramatically, and it's gone from paper to now being online. And I have to tell you, in the past couple of months and working with both Ms. Robinson, Ms. Cutler, and Ms. Sarah, I've seen them do nothing but amazing work. And she presented earlier that there are 10 regions and it's so fitting that we are Region Number 1 because I know they didn't talk too much about this, but the work that they've done since October of 2018 to now, we are definitely, the county is a role model, not just for our state, but I feel like we're a role model for every other state that is looking to do Census 2020 because they've got this vehicle going where they're including everybody as you saw on that chart, from community to government as well too. So they're up against not just something that is difficult, but almost impossible, but they're up against something that they're going to make impossible possible. So please, give me a round of, give them a round of applause because, because this work is going to reflect the entire region for the next 10 years. And Yumi Sarah, I've got to brag a little bit about her because she has a government-appointed position and that the fact that we have somebody who's representing Northern California here in our own city is huge. I mean, I almost want to come and ask her to sign this and autograph it for me and keep it because, because we don't ever get anything like that, not here. And so, round of applause for Ms. Yumi Sarah, please. And because this is the Census 2020, I'm going to ask the rest of my council colleagues, the Vice Mayor and the Mayor, or the Councilmember to come down and join us so that they could be counted in this photo op too.
Okay, and I've got a couple phones to do this, so just, ready, one, two, three.
We've got a whole bouquet.
One, two, three. I think there's one more waiting here.
Thank you.
So whose camera is it? Oh, okay, great, we've got one.
Okay, next up, we will hear from our Census ambassadors that participated in the Civic Summer at City Hall.
My name is Kasia Jensen. I'm an incoming senior from Kusunis Oaks High School. Elk Grove Civic Summer is a five-week-long program that teaches a handful of local high school-age kids the basics of civics and government. Throughout this course, my peers and I gained insight from various speakers in the community and learned about their day-to-day duties and responsibilities. I want to take this opportunity to thank the councilmembers and mayor for coming out to speak to us, as well as individuals like the city clerk, city manager, and the chief of police. Taking time out of your busy schedules to come talk to us is greatly appreciated and has positively contributed to our experience in this program. Elk Grove Civic Summer has given me a deeper understanding of how local government functions and operates. It has reaffirmed my passion for policy and my aspiration to become a public servant. In the upcoming weeks, I will be interning at Assemblyman Jim Cooper's office where I hope to gain more insight in the world of politics and better understand the inner workings of the legislative process. Thank you.
Good evening, Councilmembers. I am Viet Baot Chan, a senior at Kusunis Oaks, and throughout the Civic Summer program, I have learned several important social and work skills. For example, one of them is the importance of networking, which can open doors to new opportunities. I also learned a lot about the inner workings of the local government where I only previously knew of the mayor and vice mayor. Now I know of all the other positions in the city that make the city run smoothly. This makes me more informed for when I vote in the future. I also got the opportunity to hear from a unique variety of presenters who gave me knowledge of what their daily lives and jobs are and how they were motivated by their own goals of helping people. They also shared all of their favorite quotes to us, which made me really happy. In the future weeks, I will be having an internship at the CSD IT Department for our hope to gain work skills and advanced knowledge of computer systems. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Greetings and salutations, three-fifths of the city council member, city council. My name is Kai Seran and I am a soon-to-be junior at Franklin High School. Go Wildcats! The Elk Grove Civic Summer program has given me the opportunity to learn about new skills that can be used in the working world. This includes how to dress professionally, how to collaborate with coworkers, and how to present yourself to your successful individuals. These skills have prepared me for my up-and-coming internship at the Sacramento County Department of Personnel Services where I will be making a video to hire more employees for the department. The internship was ideal for me because I helped to major in media once in college and this internship will give me the experience in the field and show colleges I am ready to pursue a career in media. I believe the Civic Summer program has not only helped me, but all of my fellow students to build relationships, learn new working skills, and prepare themselves for the next few years. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Can you hear me? Okay. My name is Victoria Martinez and I'm an incoming junior at Laguna Creek High School. This summer I'll be working at CSD's Kid Central. This internship will allow me to gain valuable experience in support of my dream of becoming a teacher. The first two weeks of Elk Grove Civic Summer have taught me important personal and professional life lessons. Experiencing the enthusiasm and diversity of both our guest speakers and fellow participants has meant more than you can imagine and I would like you to know how grateful we are for your support on our path to success. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Huang Wen. I'm an incoming senior at Montreal High School. I just want to thank you all for giving me such a great opportunity to learn about the city of Elk Grove. Throughout the program, I have gained the professional workplace skills, I have had the more complete vision of the government, known the different ways to give back to my community, and learned to appreciate the silent hard work that each person here is doing to run the city. I will be an intern at the CSD Fire Department under the supervision of Mrs. Laurel Schember. This is quite an unexpected experience for me because I will meet the people that I've never met before and do the things that I've never done before. I'm very excited and looking forward to this internship. Any audience who has a daughter or son that wants to participate in the program next year, information will be on EGUSD website in spring. From all of us in From all of us in Elk Grove Civic Summer Program, we highly encourage you to apply, and thank you, and enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you. All right, thus concludes your presentation. Well, we sure appreciated the opportunity to get to know you a little bit and share with you as well, and I want to recognize your instructors who are here in the room and all the hard work that they do putting this together. Thank you guys so much.
I just wanna, I wanted to echo you. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with all of you as well, too. I really enjoyed being there and meeting you all, and I look forward to hearing and seeing the wonderful things that you're gonna do in the next couple of weeks. But I'm gonna ask you this. What was my quote to you? Just shout it. Your net worth is your network. Yeah, great, good job.
I'll look forward to seeing all you guys on Friday.
All right, very good. Moving on to item number five, this is a public comment for items that are not on the agenda. If you have something that is not a regularly-agendized item that you'd like to bring up, you, now would be the opportunity. Please stay within the three-minute time limit. And first up is Leela August, and following Leela is Lynn Prettyman.
Hi.
Good evening.
I'm Leela August, and I am a resident of Elk Grove for twenty-eight years. And I'm a retired licensed clinical social worker. I worked with Sutter Health as a mental health therapist for my career. I'm here because I want to encourage you to pass an ordinance to restrict 5G towers in Elk Grove, in the residents, and in the parks, and in the schools and libraries. I want to tell you that, because I actually have symptoms of electrical sensitivity. Before I even knew what it was, you know, and back in the day, I would hold the cellphone up to my ear, and it would be like red all the time, and I'd get this big cartilage grew, a lump grew on my ear. And then I figured out, well, duh, maybe I shouldn't hold the phone to it, so I stopped. And within a few months, it went away, so that was good. And then, and then I realized my, I have a router on my desk where my computer is, for my husband's laptop, and I would sit there when he was on the laptop with it on, and I'd get that, you know that feeling like when you drank like way too much coffee, and it's not a good thing? It'd be like that, it's kind of sick. And then, I would, I realized what that was, so I figured that out. And then recently, I figured out that I could turn off everything in the house, to put the phones on airplane mode, and turn the Wi-Fi off on the computers and everything. And finally, I'm actually sleeping where I can dream. You know, I have that deep REM dream sleep now, which is really healing and regenerative, so it's, so I know myself that it matters to me. And so I wanted to say that when I go for my walk every morning, you know, through my neighborhood and in the park, if there's like these 5G antennas, like frequently spaced like they have to be, I mean, I don't want to sound dramatic, but it's horrifying to me to think about that. So I just wanted to say that. And I had an email sent to you, because I've been out for a week, and it had a couple of questions. Just one was, if you were, if part of your charge was the safety and the health of Elk Grove citizens? Because if it is, this is an important issue. And the other question was, if you personally felt well-informed about this topic? Because I know, I mean, hats off to Mark Graham, he has laid information at your feet for like over a year, and if you've looked at it and read it, you'll know, you know, there's a lot of good information out there that talks about that. And, but if you haven't, on that email, I put up, I wrote, I put down the title of a book. It's actually, the author's really easy to read, and I laughed out loud a few times reading it. So I mean, it's a very informative book, though, it's on that email. And, and that's, that's about all I wanted to say. I just thank you, and please, don't, you know, pass an ordinance, like a whole bunch of cities. I think there's like six or seven cities in California that did it. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. Next up is Lynn Prettyman. Following Lynn is Lynn Wheat.
Hi, I'm Lynn Prettyman, and Leela talked me into coming in here also about the 5G. And I really believe in technology, and when she told me about 5G, I said, excuse me, I love technology, I want it. And then I started investigating it. I'm a retired state executive, so I have some time now to start looking up stuff. And so I started reading about 5G. And just to give you some technical information, in May of two thousand nineteen, three congressmen expressed concerns regarding the rollout in their communities. It does require small cell towers. It's a little bit different than 3G and 4G. It requires five times the amount of infrastructure that 3G and 4G requires. There are no current safety RF guidelines for the, by the FCC on 5G. The current guidelines by the FCC is twenty-three years old. That kind of scared me. There are no studies that have been conducted, conducted for 5G to determine safety. That also scared me. And basically, I'm not gonna go into all the details on it. I think everybody should find their own information on it. But really, there isn't any studies yet on 5G. And before we roll it out, I want it. I think it's great. But before we roll it out, I just recommend that we study it a little bit. There's at least seven cities in California alone. There's quite a few countries that have blocked 5G, and I think we should do our due diligence in Elk Grove before we roll it out also. That's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Wheat. Following Lynn is Randy Becker.
The Civic Center is a wonderful amenity in our community, and as such, I believe we should name the Civic Center after a leader and woman who has demonstrated her commitment to serving all the people in our community. Ms. Sophia Sherman was the first elected to our city council in two thousand. As the first elected woman to the city council, she served twelve years with two terms as appointed mayor. She was the only elected councilperson to host monthly morning meetings to hear directly from her constituents. As the first elected woman to serve on city council, she advocated for many of the residents from the disabled community, veterans, and various neighborhoods. This was demonstrated by her relentless efforts to improving the quality of life for the residents from our disabled community, veterans, and others often not heard by, from the leaders. She fought for the sound rail along Stockton Boulevard. Through her efforts, the blighted corrugated metal wall at the entrance to our city was replaced with an aesthetically pleasing block wall with climbing vines. She promoted the sidewalks on Williamson Drive leading to Jesse Baker School and the Disabled Adult Education Program. This improved wheelchair and mobility access to Elk Grove and the local businesses. Ms. Sherman identified the need for a covered bus stop and bus bay in front of Kerr Middle School that offers safety for students and adults boarding the bus while easing the traffic congestion along Elk Grove Boulevard. Ms. Sherman was and has been relentless in her support of our veterans and those who serve to protect our freedoms. She advocated for the funding of the Veterans Hall and Veteran Memorial at our Civic Center site. She was Woman of the Year in nineteen ninety-nine and was again recognized in two thousand five. Ms. Sherman continues to serve our community as a board member of the Elk Grove Water District. Limited to three minutes, I selected to highlight just a few of her many contributions to our community. I believe Ms. Sherman mentored and helped to launch Councilmember Hume's political career. As her protege, Councilmember Hume, I believe you and I can agree upon Ms. Sherman's dedication of service to our community, and together, we can support and advocate the naming of the Civic Center in honor and gratitude for her endless number of contributions to the city of Elk Grove. Now is the time to dedicate and name our Civic Center in honor of our first councilwoman, Sophia Sherman. We should name it the Sophia D. Sherman Civic Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Next up is Randy Becker. Following Randy, be Michael Wolahan.
It's good to see the youth in the building today and their involvement. Because when we came to this city in nineteen seventy-five, that's how old I was. And so it's important for their participation. Elk Grove at the time ended basically at Highway ninety-nine in Elk Grove Boulevard. For those of you that live on the west side of ninety-nine, and maybe do not visit Old Town or have any business to go through Old Town, what has taken place since last Thursday is horrible with humanity and the loss of life of Officer Tara O'Sullivan. And for whatever reasons beyond us, her last resting place will be here in Elk Grove. If you take the time to venture down Elk Grove Boulevard, you will see the Sea of Blue Ribbons in honor of Officer Tara O'Sullivan. Tomorrow morning and tomorrow afternoon, the procession will leave Elk Grove early and go to Roseville and come back to Elk Grove. Our residents have stepped up and showed the community what, and this city, and the outlying areas, what community is all about. Those ribbons were put up by different folks, myself included, but not necessarily an organization, community. The flags that are gonna be flying tomorrow are for the community. I appreciate Councilman Dietrich and Soon's cooperation and conversations that I had with them last Friday. I felt sad to see how barren the Boulevard was on her arrival. It was sad. It was sad to see the procession come through, but it was also sad to see the Boulevard in the shape that it was. Unfortunately, I don't think we had the information to be prepared. So nobody in this city at all should be feel that they're at fault. But I appreciate Councilman Dietrich and Soon's involvement and staff. As tomorrow, there is, through the procession, there is a, with the flags that will be flying. I'm asking everybody in this room to show our community, show the, the area what Elk Grove is about our community. Come out and be proud to give your condolences to the family, the officers, everyone that comes through our city. It was, it was, it's been a very humbling experience, and I'm very saddened to see the situation, but on the other hand, I'm proud of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy, and thank you for, thanks for helping put those ribbons up. When I saw those go up, I was really very impressed, because you're absolutely right, that shows the community's support for Officer O'Sullivan, and what a tragic loss. And unfortunately, I didn't know that she was even coming to Elk Grove till after she was already here, but I'll be out there tomorrow for the afternoon procession, handing out flags to folks, so hopefully I'll get to see you there. Thanks, Randy. Next up is Michael Wolahan. Following Mr. Wolahan is Mark Graham.
My name is Mike Wolahan. I'm a resident of East Park, live over on Oakley Way, and I wanted to come and talk to you tonight about consideration of change to the municipal code twenty-three dot five-two dot zero-five-zero, more specifically, table twenty-three dot five-two dash one. This is in respect to height limits for fences and walls, and specifically on street sides of corner lots. Just a little background on my situation, I live on the corner of Sierra River and Oakley Way, and recently, consistent with other homes on the street and in my neighborhood, I have rebuilt my side-street fence to the back of the sidewalk, that's the back edge of the sidewalk. The reasons for doing this were, one, the fence needed to be replaced, it was old, about twenty years old and about to fall down. Also, it was to prevent vandalism of my landscaping, that has been happening over the years since I've lived at this property, broken branches, stolen rocks, et cetera. Also, to avoid having to constantly pick up trash that's thrown in the side yard there on a daily basis. Also, on more than one occasion, I've had to shoo people away from the bushes or from parking on the side street there, who'd either been consuming or selling drugs. So though, though permits not needed for a fence, before moving, I had my contractor come and talk to the city planning department. He showed pictures of other fences in the neighborhood at the back sidewalk, and they said, so long as it was not a permanent structure, there was no problem to do this. Later on, after moving the fence, I received a notice of violation of the municipal code that I referenced before. So the reason I'm here is, I would like to ask the city council to put on agenda for consideration, reevaluation of that section of the municipal code. For my situation, I acted in good faith, thinking, you know, I wasn't doing this maliciously. I was intending to follow the process by having my contractor talk to the planning department. The fence in its current location is consistent with other fences on this street and in my neighborhood. Also, a couple of things I've learned about the code enforcement for this is that the intent of the code is to prevent having walled-off side streets. My fence does not present a walled-off appearance compared to other shrubs and trees that do encroach on the sidewalk more than my fence does. Sight distance has also been cited, cars parked on the street are more of an obstruction than my fences, and all neighbors I've talked to say that it looks great and it's an improvement. A couple of other things to consider, our enforcement is on a complaint basis and is not consistent throughout the city, and there's been a number of fences that have been relocated similar to mine, which have not been reported to the city since mine has been relocated. Also, it appears there may be new developments or subdivisions that are not in compliance with this, just from looking around, I haven't measured those ones, but there's a couple that look pretty close. Furthermore, the setbacks requirement is onerous and extensive. As parcel sizes shrink, this shrinks the usable size a lot for these corner lots. And this is property I pay taxes on that I cannot use and I have to maintain. I have a couple exhibits of pictures that I could also, to go along with this.
Great. If you give those to the Assistant City Clerk, and I apologize for not getting back to you after your most recent voicemail, but I did make a note to bring up your item under Council Comments.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next up is Mark Graham. Following Mark Graham is Joe Engel.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mark Graham, I live in Elk Grove. A little bit less prepared than usual tonight, but anyway. Representative Anna Eshu, whose district includes Palo Alto, introduced a bill that I think the city should support. It's called HR five-thirty, and it's basically to, basically cancel out the Federal Communications Commission order from last September that would strip away the city's powers to regulate public right-of-way. So, that's one thing. We are, the city is represented by the League of California Cities and the National League of Cities, and both of those organizations, along with dozens of other cities and municipal leagues from all across the country, and the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and the National Association of Counties, and just one local government association after another, have sued the Federal Communications Commission over that order. So here's how it affects you now, and I touched on this last time, but I want to flush it out a little bit more. If this, I know that the planning commission's getting ready to hear the FCC AT&amp;T application soon. The city can either rush into it and amend the zoning code and sign agreements while the FCC order is in effect, or you could wait until it gets, until all those lawsuits get fully resolved. I think, and you should ask Mr. Hobbs, that the FCC order will be overturned. And the reason is, it's a big overreach. And it's not just my opinion, there are cities from across the country, Los Angeles, Las Vegas, New York, Dallas, Seattle, Portland, Philadelphia, it's just one thing after another. It's virtually unanimous. I would be surprised if there's one city or one county in the United States that likes that FCC order. So, it's a matter of strategy. It's imagine like you're sitting, you're driving through your car, you're approaching a light, it's red. You have two options. You could rush through it, or you could wait till it turns green. Now, we don't know for sure that the FCC order's gonna be overturned, but there's a good likelihood, and you have nothing to lose by waiting. Similarly, if you're playing blackjack, would you rather make a larger bet when the deck is full of tens or when the deck is full of fives? You'd rather do it when the deck is full of tens, because there's a greater chance the dealer's gonna bust. And there was one other clever analogy I thought of, but I can't remember right now. Anyway, the... Anyway, the Safe G. Bring us Safe G. What is Safe G? Safe G offers a safe, reliable alternative to the dangerous future which 5G would create. Safe G is not a single product or service, but a framework for an internet and telecommunications system that respects our health, privacy, and our security, and our right to choose what is best for ourselves and our communities. Safe G means fast, reliable, secure internet and telecommunications services brought into our homes and businesses by wired technology. It means technology that safeguards our health, privacy, and security, and evolves over time with the goal of reducing exposure to harmful wireless radiation. Safe G is about choice. All right. Last thing I'll mention, the American Public Power Association actually is one of the many organizations that has, I think they've intervened in one of these lawsuits against Federal Communications Commission. And APPA, American Public Power Association, includes SMUD. So this is one day that I'm winning, I'm rooting for SMUD to win this court battle. Check it out. I will send you a link. And I'm still, finally, I'm working on the audience questions and the panelists' comments from our symposium that we had. I was hoping to have them finished by today, and they're like two-thirds done, but I'll send that to you by the end of the week.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Next up, Joe Engel. Following Joe will be Kathy Engel.
I am going to read a partial quote of a statement, and then the citizen following me will comment on what I've read. "For a community to be whole and healthy, it must be based on people's love and concern for each other. We are not only residents of a community who have come together, we are a team that is working for the most desirable city that we call home, to work consistently for the best interests of the community to which we belong. We were determined to bring forth new concepts, ordinances, and quality of life issues for the betterment of the city of Elk Grove. In closing, our commitment to Elk Grove was best said by Aldo Leopold. We abuse land because we regard it as a commodity belonging to us. When we see land as a community to which we belong, we may begin to use it with love and respect." Thank you.
Thank you. Citizen Engel, you're up.
So, does that sound familiar to anybody?
Is that a proud mama?
Huh? Oh, yes, it is. I'm very proud of him. Does that sound familiar to anybody? Does anybody know who said that?
Didn't he just tell us, Leopold?
No, he, no, that was just a quote, that was the end of a statement. That was actually a quote of Steve when you were up here speaking on behalf of EG cap. So those were the, but the things that you said really resonated with me as far as community. And so since we only have three minutes, that's why I enlisted the help of my handsome son to come up and read that first. The things that I wanted to talk about today are an issue that I'm having with finding out about permitting for the CMU Event Center. So I've been, I did finally receive a response from Shane Diller today, but I was wondering where I can find out what is permitted and what the original entitlements to that property are. It must be somewhere, right?
Sure. I believe planning would have all that on file.
Okay. Because I didn't see anything from there, from the time that CMU has taken it over, that that was an allowed use in their, in their existing conditional use permit. So I think everybody's been to events there, including myself. So, you know, that is obviously a concern. And so with that, I want to speak to the way people behave. The FBI teaches that future behavior is best predicted by past behavior. And what we seem to have is a community member over in our area that doesn't respect their neighbors. We have their students all over our neighborhood, parking everywhere they're not supposed to. They have been engaging in a, an effort of moving trash cans, not letting people get in on their driveways, things like that. We have repeatedly asked them publicly. They will say, we have talked to them, but clearly that is not, that is not the case. So moving forward, having something even bigger come, we don't have a lot of confidence that they would, that they would start suddenly obeying rules. And so it is a concern, and I would hope that somebody can get back to me on if they are permitted over there. And if they're not, what's going to happen? You know, because I think they've been doing that for about five years. So that's all. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Matt, would you give, or Antonio, would you give Kathy a card so she knows how to get ahold of you? Thank you. Finally, last speaker I have signed up, Jesse Olivar.
First of all, my prayers go out to Tara and her family. Sad situation. I've came here many times before, and apparently, nobody can say Yessi. It says it right there, right? It's pronounced Yessi. You don't say Juwan, you don't say Jose, do you? Right? Is that right? You're not going to answer. Okay, well, I worked in the census in 1980. I never got paid. How you doing? I went to the military. I came out of the military, I went to the post office, ended up working in Elk Grove. I got fired. They didn't like me for some reason, but the kids used to come up and tear the mail out of my hands and call me the N-word. It didn't happen once or twice or three times or 100 times. It happens a lot, a lot. And I'm here to say that the Citizens United that you guys are trying to pull off, especially you, you get paid $247,000 a year? Is that more than the mayor? And the officer, Officer McCoy, she makes $150,000 a year? You came to my house politicking and your husband had a gun on him. I don't like guns. I don't use guns. Before there was a president, there was a king. Welcome to Yerba Buena. I'm the king of Yerba Buena, like it or not. I have, my case finally got to the Ninth Circuit Court. Can you believe that? Finally, after all these years. You know, you guys get to answer now. Or not, you don't have to answer because I'm sure they threw all the paperwork away. Luckily, I still have it because when you raided my home during Christmas, you didn't find it. You stole my cock ring, though. Huh? You guys are too much. You guys need to answer. You're the guy that's supposed to answer Citizens United. I seen it on television. It was there. I heard what you said. It was a short paragraph. And don't worry, I'll use it in the Ninth Circuit Court. I'm Sergeant-at-Arms, that's what they call people during wartime. They say this is peacetime. This isn't peacetime. We have a president that's going crazy, and you guys are all helping him. I was arrested at your church. Later Day Saints Church. It says big welcome sign. Not me, I'm down on my stomach with my hands behind my back, handcuffed, jailed for seven days for no reason, going to the library. I got stopped two times by two different cops, the same day, the same 30 minutes. 30 minutes after that, I'm arrested at your church. I've been in jail, not jail, I've been locked up, I don't know, about five, six times for no reason. This is the way you guys treat me. Can you imagine how you treat the other indigenous people? I'm what you call a Syrian Indian, not an Indian, indigenous. You guys want to play with this Indian word and hire people like Amy Barra? I want to know who, who vetted Steve Lee? How did he get here? Oh, my time's up. Good luck.
I'll send him to court.
Thank you, Yessi.
You're welcome. Thank you for saying my name, I really appreciate that. Next up, Constance Connolly. And hers is the last speaker slipped received. If there's anybody else that would like to speak on an item that's not on the agenda?
Good evening. Just a kind of tidbit of things. Appreciate, I live really near the roundabout at Sheldon and Power and Roads, and the new landscaping that's going in is really nice. So thank you for that. Great little speech that Joe Engel wrote. I happen to have written that for someone else to read, so I appreciate him bringing back something that was written in 2005. It's more true today than it was then. Because for the first time, obviously, I don't get out much for someone who's lived in Elk Grove for 40 years. I have never been over to Stone Lake. I have never been over to that area, but I went Saturday night on an invitation to go to Dreaming Dog Brewery because they had a Beatles rendition band. And I was told that that area, first of all, it's not a strip mall. A strip mall is what's at Sheldon and Elk Grove Florin. That is, that area over there is not a strip mall. That is a, you know, a lot of businesses are in there, it's spread out, and for some former council member to say that that area is, the businesses are filled with blight is totally incorrect. I don't know if any of you have been over there, but what I saw was a packed house at Dreaming Dog Brewery. And because they don't serve food, people were going out to other businesses that were across the way and buying pizza, buying sushi. They had a soul food caterer outside, and people were coming in, the place was packed. So people are always saying there's nothing to do in Elk Grove. But this, but on Saturday night, if you go to Dreaming Dog Brewery, probably Friday night and other nights as well, it is packed with people spending their money in Elk Grove and keeping it Elk Grove. So this whole thing about this shopping center with, that's going to have blight is simply not true. And we need to start speaking truth to power. And hopefully, people will listen. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that was the last speaker I had signed up for public comment for items not on the agenda, so we'll go ahead and close that and move on to item number six, general administration information.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor and members of the city council. I'd like to start my comments by turning some time over to our Police Chief Brian Noblet to talk about the plans for the processional and other arrangements for Tara, Officer Tara O'Sullivan tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Bearman. Vice Mayor, council members, and members of the public that are here, I just want to go over some of the details regarding the services tomorrow and then speak to some of our efforts that we've made to be of assistance as the community and the Sacramento Police Department and certainly Officer O'Sullivan's family grapple with this tragedy. So as was mentioned earlier by Mr. Becker, the services are being held at Bayside Adventure Church out in Roseville. However, Officer O'Sullivan is still here in Elk Grove as we speak at the, at the Herberger facility on East Elk Grove Boulevard. And the procession will be departing that location tomorrow morning at eight o'clock, at approximately eight o'clock, and making their way to Highway 99 and then on to the, to the church in Roseville. Those services are scheduled to actually begin at 10:00 a.m. tomorrow. It's anticipated that the procession will be leaving the church in Roseville at approximately 1:15 tomorrow and should be back in Elk Grove, exiting onto Elk Grove Boulevard at approximately 2:30. We expect this to be a very large procession of marked and unmarked law enforcement vehicles. I heard a figure earlier, I don't know how accurate it'll be, but you know, it could be a, it could be a 10-mile-long procession of vehicles. So there are going to be some traffic impacts in our city for the, for the afternoon hours, for sure. With respect to, to just some of our activities to be of assistance to the Sacramento Police Department at their request, we, we're, our organization is handling all of the traffic detail, the associated closures of Elk Grove Boulevard, Waterman Road, Sheldon Road tomorrow in the morning, and then again in the afternoon when the procession makes its way back to Elk Grove. We've got approximately 120 personnel. Those are sworn, non-sworn volunteers, some from other agencies who are assisting us as we handle that traffic plan. In addition, there is a private reception that will be held at Creekside Church following the procession for family members and some law enforcement personnel, so our staff and the End of Watch Fund members are staffing that event as well. So Mr. Bearman asked just that I speak a little bit about the, about the activities tomorrow and then some of our involvement. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions. I, if you'll indulge me, while I have the microphone, I do want to thank Mr. Becker for his comments earlier. And in addition to Mr. Becker, our, our, our community at large has been incredibly supportive of Officer O'Sullivan, her family, the Sacramento Police Department, law enforcement in general, and it's just, it's very touching. And I just want people, and I want everybody in this room and anybody within your shot to just know how appreciated that is and to thank, thank the public for their, for their very kind support.
Thank you, Chief. Moving on with some of my other brief comments regarding other things that might be happening in the community in the coming weeks. Our animal shelter is making great progress, nearing completion. There's an item on your agenda tonight that would allow for a short-term contract with Sacramento County until that facility becomes available. Right now, we anticipate being able to accept animals on July 8th, which is a week from this coming Monday. That date is still subject to change depending on when we're able to have, that'll be a partial occupancy of that building. The full occupancy and ground opening won't be until later this summer, so we'll continue to keep the council updated. One of the things that comes around every July is the city's birthday, July 1st is coming up. This is the year number 19. Next year, we'll be at our 20th milestone, so we'll be celebrating that day. The Elk Grove community's been here since 1850s, but as a city, we've been incorporated since 2000. Along with the city's cityhood celebration, we also have our nation's celebration. We, the city is going to be celebrating Independence Day and the city's birthday next Thursday at Elk Grove Regional Park. The city will host the 23rd Annual Elk Grove Salutes the Red, White, and Blue on July 4th in partnership with the Kasuma CSD. Exhibits open at four o'clock in the afternoon. Over picnicking in the park is available all day. Festivities include Let Freedom Ride, Bike and Stroller Parade, and the Piety in Context beginning at 5:30. Opening ceremonies on the stage are scheduled to start at 7:00, followed by a free concert from the Spazmatics and a spectacular fireworks show, as always, at 9:40 p.m. Admission to the event is free. Parking inside the park is $10. Additional details are available at the city's website. City will observe Independence Day on Thursday, July 4th will be closed. You heard from the students tonight, Civic Summer, the first two-week part of that program is over. They take a break next week and then they come back with, with volunteer, or internships of a variety of facilities and opportunities across the city, including, I think, about 11 positions throughout city operations. And then final reminder on police chief recruitment. It's wrapping up. That'll close on Monday, July 8th. Members of the public, if they haven't yet had an opportunity or gone on our website taking the survey, and it's still up, it will be up through July 8th, so we encourage a member to go on there and let us know what attributes you're looking for, you'd like to see in the next police chief for the city of Elk Grove. And just a warning, a reminder to our residents about safe and sane fireworks this time of the year, that we will be out in full enforcement confiscating and issuing citations for those that are in violation of the city's fireworks ordinance and illegal fireworks. So please take note of that. Legal, safe and sane fireworks go on sale on Friday, June 28th. And I believe that's, that wraps up my presentation. If council members have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Very good. Any questions for Jason?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. All right, now we'll move on to item number seven, council comments, reports, and future agenda items, starting with Councilmember Nguyen.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I'll be brief. Again, earlier, the ladies from the Census 2020 was here. I attended a Complete Count Regional convening meeting where many of us, our very own, Ms. Kristen was there as well, too, representing our city of Elk Grove, to discuss what we want to see happen and how we want to make this happen and make, make sure that this is going to be successful. As you heard earlier, there are going to be some challenges, so the fact that we're all coming together to work on this as a community is, is a positive step moving forward. I had my Juvenile Justice Commission meeting, where we're in the middle of monitoring and going through some of the locations as our annual monitoring happens. Had the opportunity to speak with our very own Civic Summer group there. They're amazing, and I'm really excited to see them go out there, hit the ground running and, and meeting them out there in the community. So I did tell them that anybody that's working in the city, I will make sure I come by and poke them every day just to, to get them excited about being here. I was at their Run for Hunger, what a wonderful, great event. Our very own Assembly Member Jim Cooper was there as well, too, and huge kudos to him for being able to hopefully secure a couple million dollars for the Sacramento, for the Elk Grove Food Bank. Earlier, I had my regional fire diversity meeting where I meet with some of the fire chiefs from around the region to discuss how we can diversify some candidates that want... that want to become firefighters, EMT, and paramedics. And I, I wanna thank Mr. Becker for his comment. Obviously, as a wife of one of our very own here, watching the community and seeing the love and the support for our officers. And while she's a Sac PD officer, we see them all as family, as one of our own. And so I wanna thank him and everybody else that, that went out there. It was truly, truly heartfelt. And the fact that we as a city, as a community, put that together, it was captured on the news as well too. So, so it wasn't just here, but many other cities saw it. And then lastly, I want to introduce my two summer interns, Sarah Munguia and Marissa Kim, who are sitting back there. Ladies, can you stand for me, please? There you are, yes. They started with me this week and they will continue to be throughout the rest of the summer, working right alongside with me and attending all my meetings. So thank you, ladies, and that's all I have, sir.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Detrick.
Yeah, Chief, thank you for that recap. You know, obviously for you and the whole Elk Grove PD team hits closer to home than most people 'cause you live that day in and day out. And Randy, thanks for getting ahold of us last week and had the opportunity to work with Jason and Brian to see what we could maximize from the city's point of view. And I think Councilman Hume's gonna bring up some items in a little while, but the community that's come out is, has been unbelievable. And those are the kind of things that make Elk Grove special. And Randy, I know you lived there in Old Town, so you're, you're actually living it and seeing it probably more than a lot of us are. And the, the feedback from you is really appreciated. And look forward to giving Tara the honor that she deserves and her family as well as all, all the officers that'll be coming through Elk Grove. I did have the chance to go to the Strauss Donor Gala. The city of Elk Grove is one of the major sponsors for that event. It was at the pavilion in Elk Grove Park. And it had the showing of the upcoming dancing that they'll be performing next month. Always a, always a great event. I went to the Camden Neighborhood Association Annual Meeting. Jason, you, I know you're usually there, you wouldn't have a chance to make it this year, but huge representation from both Bob and Brian's teams as well as other staff members. And I know that Camden really appreciates it and they, they do a great job over there. That's all I have for now.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Sun, welcome.
Welcome. Good evening, everybody. I just want to start off by also expressing my condolences to Officer O'Sullivan and her family and all, all of the law enforcement community. I know this council and, and our community in Elk Grove, as Chief Noblet was referred to earlier saying, I'm sure he expressed how much we appreciate law enforcement. And I know there's been, you know, some, I guess, a little bit of controversy around how we, we pay tribute to that. But I just wanna, you know, remind everybody that, you know, we're here to, to honor the fallen and however you pay your respects, how you show your gesture, all of it, I, I believe, is, is worthy. So I'm really happy, I understand some things have happened that are kinda riding the ship, so to speak, and, and understandings are, have been created. And so I really am grateful for the community just being out there. I know Randy, where are you, Randy Becker? I know, hey buddy, it's good to see you. I know you brought it up originally to many of us. And so I'm glad we were able to move things ahead and, and show tribute in the best way that we can as a city. As to things that attended, I'll just keep it brief. Summer at City Hall, had a chance to be here and speak to many of the, the youth and it was really great to see, it was a big class and it was really great to see so many from all the different, different schools. And where I just came from was for a, a meet and greet for the California Transportation Commission and where SECOG and, and other transportation authorities were hosting them. These are people that are appointed across the state by the governor. They are in charge of making decisions about funding allocations for rail, transit, and road projects, among other things. But that's, that's a, the big one that folks pay attention to. And so it was really important that our, our city was, was represented and we got a chance to see these folks put a face. I got a chance to talk to the vice chair, who lives in Modesto, about 99 and our needs, our needs there and, and just overall as, as a city. And there, just a, a quick tie to the Summer at City Hall, they had a speaker, we had a youth leadership program where one of the students was, was there speaking to not only the, the decisions that we make affecting her generation, but the significance of, of youth getting involved and learning how this process works beyond this, the local level. But like I mentioned earlier, at the regional level. So anyway, that was, it was a great turnout. And I'll, I'll, I'll just stop there. Thank you.
Great, thank you. The only official meeting I had was a paratransit meeting where we adopted the annual budget. And the only thing to report as far as relative to Elk Grove is paratransit and R2 still in negotiations over who will be providing regional ADA service. So that's not yet been decided. I too spoke with the Civic Summer at City Hall participants and I was very impressed with the level of research they had done and the probing questions they asked from, you know, what, what regrets do I have? Or what motto do I live by? Or how do I, how, how do I be an auctioneer? And they had some good stuff, so it was a, a lot of fun to do that. I also want to thank the Economic Development Department, particularly Rachel Brown. I attended the California Real Estate Women's Event that they put on. I didn't participate on the tour where they kind of highlighted some of the different projects going on around town, but I did join them for the tour of our civic center that's under construction. If you haven't been inside that space, it's, it's pretty fantastic. And so it's coming along very well and it's, it's gonna be a neat space. With respect to the, the processials tomorrow, I will be out there with the End of Watch folks, handing out flags starting at noon. We're going to meet at the Elk Grove Library. I don't know if that's the only place we're gonna hand out flags or if we're gonna take some flags and be mobiles. But if you'd like to come by and get a flag to show your respect, please do so. Also, I know that there are some folks volunteering. If you would like to stand a post with a thin blue line flag, I believe they're meeting in the Smart and Final parking lot. I'm not sure what time, but prior to the parade, obviously. And then, you know, we'd ask that you maintain a spot along the route. And then Randy, are you guys meeting to hand out the, the flags that you have?
You know, there was some discussion about meeting at Smart and Final.
Okay.
Around 11:30.
Okay.
I'm not party to that group.
Oh, okay.
But I was participant in that group of what they wanted to do that evening.
Great. And then I know that the, the CSD will drape a large American flag over the processional route, I believe somewhere in the vicinity of Kerr Middle School. So please, if you are around tomorrow and can make it out, as Randy mentioned in his comments, you know, this is about the community, showing our support, showing our values and coming out and respecting the sacrifice that Officer O'Sullivan made.
Vice Mayor, are there any specific things happening in the morning and the early part? Sounds like there are things in the afternoon.
Yeah, I believe the afternoon is, that's the real processional. The morning is just gonna be transported up to, to Bayside. And then in the afternoon will be when the, the full convoy, if you will, will come through town.
Okay, thank you.
I think we're trying to have people at both, in the morning and the afternoon. So I'll be there in the morning and I, I have a big three-by-five thin blue line flag that I'll be holding. So if anybody is interested in coming out, loading the flag with me, you're more than welcome to join me and I will be in that Smart and Final parking lot.
Great, great, thank you. Then sort of shifting gears and not in any way to rain on tomorrow's activities, but there was a lot of, for lack of a better word, controversy over which flag the city should fly and where and what would be appropriate. And I know that this isn't the only time that that issue's gonna come up. And so I would like to have us come back with a policy that just establishes that for city facilities, we will only fly the governmental flags of the national, the state, and the city. And that way, we don't have a subjective situation where we're determining which group should or should not have a decorative flag flown on city facilities.
I agree to bring that back and it's, this has happened before too.
Yeah.
So this, this would codify it.
Yeah, let's bring it back. Okay, great, thank you. And then the other item I'd like to ask for council consensus is with respect to Mr. Wolahan and his fence situation. He did go down or send his contractor down to the planning department or somebody within City Hall who asked about a permit, was told no permit was required, didn't get into the setback issue. The contractor then built the fence to his testament and also to, you know, those of his neighbors. It's an improvement, the new fence that's there. So I know we've dealt with this previously, but I'd like to bring it back. I'm, I'm get out of being the fence place business, but.
I, I'd support that. I actually had a constituent who also came and did the same thing, built his fence. He was exactly like you, were at the corner, zero setback, built it, and then was fined $500. He ended up fixing it, but I'm happy to hear you come out here 'cause I encouraged him to come out and he, he didn't wanna come out and do anything. So I, I support that as well too.
I think I support bringing it back as long as we get all the data from whatever, whatever the current code is in relative, I haven't seen the pictures yet. If it's all, what was done is within the code of a fence being built, you know, 'cause there's height limitations and all those kind of things as well. As long, as long as it meets the, the base criteria, you know, I'd definitely like to see what options we could, we could do.
Yeah, I have an agreement. I, I'll just say I'm, I'm not familiar with your situation either, sir, but a lot of times there's, there's a line of sight issue that I think we could, it's an opportunity to educate the, the public on. So absolutely, let's bring it back.
Okay, so we'll bring that back. So Shane, stay in E enforcement in the meantime. And that's all I have. Moving on to item eight, the consent calendar.
So I have a request from a constituent to remove item 8.9 for, for discussion and I would move the rest of the calendar, consent calendar.
Okay, and we will note Councilmember Nguyen's recusal on item 8.19.
Yes, yep, 8.19.
Okay.
You also have a member of the public signed up to speak, Vice Mayor.
Okay, I see that. And so we will, we will pull item 8.9 off of the consent calendar. Now I'll go ahead and open the public comment opportunity. And Ms. Wheat, you would like to speak on item 8.19.
Good evening. First, I'd like this item polled for discussion or at least an opportunity to have the questions answered. I did email a Councilmember, Hume, and I only emailed you because we were the ones that had the discussion when this police contract came up in 2016. I did immediately email staff on Friday afternoon because I really wanted the study that was associated with, with this MOU. And I also recognize with it being under consent that it's a done deal and it's gonna probably be approved tonight. But I would, as a resident and taxpayer, like to have some answers to my questions. And first, the staff report and the MOU state that the city will adjust salaries to reflect the 80th percentile of the surveyed cities. I'd like clarification on this. Do you mean 80th percentile of salary alone or 80th percentile of the total compensation? I reviewed the compensation study and noted that the study analyzed comparable salaries as well as the total compensation packages, which took into account things such as city-deferred comp matches, pension contributions, and uniform allowances. I have a concern if the city is committing to the 80th percentile of salary alone and not considering the entire compensation package. For example, the compensation study showed that our police officer's salary was about 6% below the 80th percentile. But when the total compensation package was analyzed, our officers are only being paid less than 1% of the 80th percentile. And the proposed 3% hike will certainly correct that. And then finally, I, I appreciate the education of our law enforcement and I believe that they do and should be rewarded for that. However, I, I still have some concerns about that, that our police officers don't have to receive their education through accredited universities or colleges or necessarily degrees that would benefit their certain position. And so because I did not receive the information that I requested till late last night, I went further and did a little bit of research and I checked out the MOUs from Roseville, the city of Sacramento, and both cities require the degrees to be from accredited colleges and related to their work. And I would just suggest that in the private and public sector, of which I've both worked, that was a condition for that benefit. So I would just appreciate answers to my two questions and then a consideration that we look at how they're awarded for their education. Thank you.
So Lynn, I, I apologize for not emailing you back, but I just found out the answers to your question tonight and so I had a feeling you'd be here. The, it does have to come from an accredited university. It does have to be related to.
It's not written in the MOU.
Hold on, let me finish. It's not written in the MOU because the MOU is superseded by the citywide personnel policies and personnel rules. And so it's codified there. And that, anything that's not mentioned in the MOU, it defers back to the, to the citywide personnel rules.
Okay, so.
So it does have to come from an accredited university and it has to be approved by their supervisor that it is relative to their line of work.
Okay, so I just have a comment on that. When I was reading the Sacramento City, city's MOU, it clearly stated that it would reflect back to HR. It's not clearly stated in our officer's MOU.
Okay.
So, so that would leave.
That is the policy.
Well, so that's not written though and contracts would stump the policies. So they would have to abide by the contract and not necessarily a policy if it's not in the contract. Now maybe our attorney can correct me on that, but that's my understanding of how that, that situation would operate. Or if it just would be, then why, for what reason then would the city of Sacramento make sure that they had that in their contract?
Okay. And then to your second point, compensation is factored, but the 80th percentile target, I believe, only applies to salary. It's the whole package?
Total compensation.
Okay.
So it's not just the salary, it's the total compensation?
That's accurate.
Okay.
Total compensation, salary plus all benefits.
Okay, salary and benefits. Thank you.
Okay. So with that, we will again note the recusal on item 8.19 and we've pulled item 8.9 as their motion to move the remainder of the consent. So moved, seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously. And now if the clerk would please read item 8.19.
And 8.9, correct for the item.
Excuse me, 8.9.
Is the adopted resolution authorizing the city manager to execute economic development agreement with Greater Sacramento Economic Council for a term of one year for a total amount of $68,846.
Okay, great. And did you want to kick off the discussion or would you like me to call the public speaker up?
Public speaker up. I, I didn't have an issue with that. It was a request from the public.
Okay, in that case, Ms. Engel, you are on deck.
Okay. So last, I think it was last year, no, it was in 2017, Barry Broome from Greater Sacramento Economic Council spoke here and he said this. I was gonna get the video, but I didn't have, I couldn't submit it in time. Dr. Alvin Chong, one of our founders, is with us tonight. So California North State is on our board. And one of the things that we're, we'll be doing hopefully by fall, this was in 2017, is bringing a proposal, a plan back to you with the permission of Daryl and the city manager, which is odd, to build a pharmaceutical manufacturing concept and strategy around this very powerful medical and pharmacy school that's right here in our community. There has been so much money. It is not just the $68,000. There's also the $12,500 that's for the Public Relations Campaign. And then there's also the annual dinner sponsorship for $5,000. And then there's also, let's see, then there's the contribution. So for those of us who do not want that and are taxpayers, it's offensive that we have to pay for a man to come here and do something that we are so opposed to and that also has not brought any results. I spoke with Mr. Broome personally, there were several people outside of council when he gave his presentation here, and I asked him, "How many jobs have you brought to Elk Grove?" And his response was, "Well, I haven't brought any yet, but if you give me a chance, I'm gonna bring these pharmacy jobs." He clearly didn't know who I was. He clearly didn't know who I was when he said that. But that was five years. He's been saying the same thing. What he said in 2017 is what he's saying now. And so my question to you is, what type of matrix does the city use to track and find out if something is successful or maybe change to a different strategy for marketing? Because if it's not bringing results after five years, good money after bad. I'm a small business owner. I come from a family with a business. I don't know if any of you have had businesses or work in a place where you actually have to track and find out, "Hey, that isn't working, that advertising isn't working. We're not going to do that anymore." So what is the matrix for determining if this is adding any value to our city? Is it being tracked? Does anybody know? It's an agenda item, aren't you guys allowed to answer? That was a question?
Yeah, we'll answer your questions after you're done.
Okay, no, I'm done. That is my question. Is it being tracked and what are we getting for our money, I guess?
Very good, thank you. All right, so I'll go ahead and close public comment. Councilmember Sun?
Yeah, well, each year, Mr. Doan will give a report on economic development, and he identifies a lot of the metrics that he uses. I would say for me personally, you have to look at holistically. It's not, economic development is not a tangible thing. It's not, I mean, you know, I'm a civil engineer, right? I'm used to formulas and numbers and thinking whether you're CPA the same way. Economic development, I feel like is more of an art than a science. And so there's some things that, for me personally, you have to look at our awareness of Elk Grove being raised as a region, that marketing campaign, and have you ever been down to Mr. Broome's office at GSAC and talked to him about the data that they gather and that they use to, you know, target companies? Have you ever been down there?
No, but I've seen his presentations.
Yeah, well, that's what, yeah, I understand.
I know there's a value proposal.
I would encourage you to maybe just go down there and talk to them because there's a lot more than, you know, presentations are intended for highlights and not intended to have, you know, deliberation. And you and I could talk here for another hour, and I'm sure a lot of people, some people might be, enjoy it, but other people might say, "Hey, enough already." So there's a lot more details that are involved in that. And I would also encourage you, invite you to speak with Mr. Doan about, generally about economic development. I don't claim to be an expert myself, but there are things that we look at that are, you know, not necessarily cut and dry. And so this city has gone through many economic development directors that, you know, we're always wondering, "Hey, did they produce?" And it's very, it's very difficult to, I think, to just say definitively whether something is right. But I can tell you that the region, not just the city, but the region, that overwhelmingly have put up their share of money to fund that organization, which is intended to market the region, not just one city, but the region. The faith, there is still faith there. I don't know whether there'll be faith there forever, but there is currently still faith there. And you see it in, if you go look at everybody who's part of the council and who else is contributing to them for their efforts. I would say that people have opinions and other people feel differently, that they're writing big checks. Whether, CNU is just one, right? You've got Mark Friedman, you've got King's owners and all those people who also believe in things, other business people, not just sports, right, but medicine and other types of businesses. So I guess that, all I'm trying to say is that people have different opinions about whether this organization is beneficial and whether it's doing good work, and I would say today, they're doing good work.
Okay, so no jobs is good work.
All right, is there a motion to approve item 8.9?
Motion.
Second, motion and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Onto the public hearing items.
Vice Mayor, if I could address the point that was raised by Ms. Wheat that you had addressed about the personnel rules trumping or controlling over the MOU. I went ahead and looked up the provision. It's on page 37 of the MOU. What it essentially says is anything not covered by the MOU would default back to the personnel rules. So it is in the MOU.
Okay, very good, thank you. Onto item 9.1.
And that's a public hearing to consider an ordinance permitting the city of Elk Grove zoning map and resolution approving a tentative parcel map for the Tankersley Parcel Map Project. Thank you and good evening. Matt Diaz, Senior Planner, City of Elk Grove. The item before you is the Tankersley Parcel Map. This project is located at 10005 Pleasant Grove School Road in the Elk Grove Rural Area Community Plan. That's shown in the exhibit before you. This project consists of a rezone to convert 4.39 acres of AR5, that's agricultural residential with a minimum five-acre lot size, to an AR2, which is an agricultural residential with a minimum two-acre lot size. It also involves a tentative parcel map to divide the existing parcel into two new parcels. On June 6 of this year, the Planning Commission voted 3-0 recommending approval of the project. Two commissioners were absent at that meeting. There is an exhibit indicating the rezone. As you can tell by the image, the AR2, or proposed AR2, will be contiguous with the adjacent AR2 to the west of the property. There is the tentative parcel map. One existing parcel will be split into two parcels. There will be an access easement driveway going from the south parcel to the north parcel. No construction is proposed with this application. A few of the conditions that are included with tonight's items, a final map to record the easement and a possible deferred improvement agreement for the driveway construction. Driveover construction would have to occur before the single-family home is constructed, and the new home is subject to all of the rural area standards as well as zoning and municipal code. Environmental analysis, no further environmental review is required per Section 15183 as it's consistent with the community plan, general plan. And based off of that, staff recommends the city council find no further environmental view is necessary, adopt an ordinance approving the rezone, and approve the tentative parcel map subject to the findings and conditions of approval. Staff as well as the applicant are here to answer any questions you might have.
Very good, thank you. Any questions of Matt? Thank you, Matt. Okay, I'll declare the public hearing open and invite the applicant up to speak, if you'd like, sir.
Counsel? Mr. Diaz summed up our project pretty well. I'm here to answer any questions if you have any specific questions. I'm a land surveyor, and I'd be happy to talk you through anything you have concerns about.
Would you mind stating your name for the record?
Robert Snow.
Thank you much.
Licensed land surveyor.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Snow? No?
No.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thanks for your time.
All right, I'll go ahead and open the public comment opportunity. I have nobody signed up to speak, so I'll close the public comment opportunity. I don't believe you want to refute yourself, so I'll allow the applicant to waive his opportunity to come back and speak again, declare the public hearing closed, and move on to council deliberation and action.
Motion one, introduce and waive the four reading by substitution of title only in ordinance finding that no further environmental review is required pursuant to state secret guidelines, Section 15183, and approving the rezone of the Tankersley Parcel Map Project PLNG 19-006, Assessor Parcel Number 127-0080-064.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number two.
Motion two.
All right, a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Onto item 9.2, please.
And 9.2 is a public hearing to consider a major design review amendment and conditional use permit for the Calvine Point Amendment Project.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Sarah Kertskeisner, Planning. The project consists of a major design review amendment and a new conditional use permit for the previously approved Calvine Point project to modify the overall site plan by shifting building locations as well as adding three drive-throughs. The project includes design review for three new buildings. The project applicant also proposes to remove condition of approval related to the restriction of health clubs on the site. The city council was approving authority for the original Calvine Point project, so that is why the project is before you tonight. The project is located near the southwest corner of Calvine Road and Elk Grove Florin Road. The project consists of two parcels that were part of the previously approved project. The Coles, Bank of America, El Pollo Loco, the Island Pacific Seafood Market, and one multi-tenant building have all been constructed pursuant to the previously approved project. As I said, in 2005, the council approved the original project. It included a general plan amendment, a rezone, tentative parcel map, and design review for the site layout. It did not include design review for the buildings and architecture at that time. In 2007, the Planning Commission approved a design review for the Coles building, and there was some revisions made to the overall site plan. It shifted the S1 building here to north of the Coles building as well as the M1 building to this location. And I think, and the S1, as I said, was moved here to the north. The current project would amend the previous approvals to modify the Shops 4 building from an inline retail building to an approximately 3,000-square-foot drive-through, reconfigure the Shops 1 building with a drive-through north of the existing Coles building. It would replace the Majors building in the southern portion of the site from three buildings to two buildings, and it would eliminate the previously approved Shop 3 building. The proposed project is consistent with the development standards of the zoning code and the design guidelines. As I said, the project includes design review for three new buildings. The proposed Shops 1 drive-through building shown on the site plan in red is located north of existing Coles. The architecture and design of the building is consistent with the previous approvals. The proposed Drive Through 2 building includes the same colors and materials as the Shop 1 building. It includes both arch and linear elements similar to Coles. The proposed M4 building is located in the southern portion of the site. The building is compatible with the overall Calvine Point shopping center. However, it does incorporate some modern design elements to make the building distinctive. The M3 building would come back at a later date for design review. The project includes three new drive-throughs. Drive-through 2 is permitted by right, and the drive-through 1 and the proposed drive-through associated with the future M3 building would, do require approval of a conditional use permit because they are within 300 feet of a residential zoning district. However, to the west of the site, it is developed as a temple. It is not developed with residential uses. And the drive-through to the south is a non-food drive-through use. They would be subject to the newer standards of the code, and therefore they would be compatible with the area and would not significantly impact a residential use. The project proposes to amend the conditions of approval to remove a previous condition placed on the Calvine Point project that restricted health club use on the site. That was an originally negotiated condition between private property owners, and it is no longer valid, and fitness and sports facilities are allowed use by right in this zone. There is no further environmental review required pursuant to Section 15162. There was a previous EIR adopted as part of Calvine Point. Staff recommends approval of the project, and I'm available for questions.
Very good, thank you, Sarah. Any questions? No? Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and declare the public hearing open and invite the applicant up to speak. Mr. Petrovich?
It's been a long time. Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor and the rest of the council. My name is Paul Petrovich with Petrovich Development Company, and I'm here to answer any questions rather than go into a long... You've had a long enough night so far.
And we're just getting started.
Yes.
Very good. Any questions for the applicant? Yeah, Councilmember Sun?
Quick question. I was just wondering about the statement about the agreement about the health center. Could you get some history on that? What was that about?
Do you want me to go back to 1994 when I bought the property?
If you can, I know it's a long time ago, Paul.
Coles originally had an issue with putting in a health club because back in the day, when retail was stronger than it is today, they were afraid of the parking impacts. Fast forward 15 years, they now welcome these types of uses that bring traffic, and you're seeing a lot of these health clubs come into centers to revitalize them because they're internet-proof. So that was the agreement between us and Coles, and they no longer want it. And one of the users, in fact, the specific use that I'm here tonight to hopefully advance, is for City Sports, which is a subsidiary of LA Fitness, an 800-store chain out of Southern California, for 37,000 square feet with an indoor pool.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? No? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and open the public comment opportunity. I have nobody signed up to speak. Is there anybody wishing to speak on this item? If there's nobody, I will close the public comment opportunity. I don't believe we need to hear from the applicant again, and so I'll declare the public hearing closed and move for council...
Move staff's recommendation.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and two seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Onto item 9.3.
Paul, that was a little easier than I think the last time you were here.
And item 9.3 is a public hearing to consider approving the reported delinquent public nuisance abatement and sidewalk repair costs and their collection on the tax roll.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Shane Giller from Development Services. This evening's item is our annual report for the tax roll of delinquent public abatement costs. This year, we've also included delinquent sidewalk repair costs in partnership with Public Works. Currently on the report, we have $12,630 in sidewalk repair costs spread over six properties and $4,625 in public nuisance abatement costs spread over 10 properties. The California Government Code and the Municipal Code allow for the city to tax roll through special assessment the public nuisance abatement costs. And the California Streets and Highways Code, along with the Municipal Code, allow for the special assessment of the sidewalk repairs. For public nuisance abatement costs to get to this stage, the property owner would have been initially noticed of the violation and had an opportunity to correct. The city then would have had to perform corrective action ourselves after appeals had been exhausted, appeals periods had been exhausted, and no action had been taken on the part of the property owner. The property owner was then also notified of the abatement costs and given an opportunity to pay. And then they were again notified, in this case, on June 3 of this hearing, and have been provided an opportunity to pay up till now. So the items, the public nuisance properties you have on the report have gone through all of that process and are still delinquent as of today. For sidewalk repairs, it follows a similar process in that the property owner is notified of the need to repair and fails to respond. They're then notified of the sidewalk repairs that are performed by Public Works or Public Works contractors and do not pay or respond to those notices. And then they were notified of this hearing and have not yet paid as of May 28, 2019. The properties you have on the tax roll, report before you now, do have an opportunity still to pay before July 29. If they pay by then, we would remove them from the tax roll that would be sent to the county in August. With that, both myself and Public Works staff are available for questions.
Very good, thank you. Any questions for Shane?
No questions, but I appreciate you doing this. I think this is the way to go. I think it's long overdue.
Shane, I had a question. I looked through the staff report and I couldn't find it. Can you give me an idea of what nuisance abatement we might have performed that we would be looking for?
They're most typically the mowing of high weeds in June.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, that's the overwhelmingly, overwhelming majority of them are related to that.
Okay, thank you. All right, I will go ahead and declare the public hearing open and open the public comment opportunity. I have one speaker signed up. It's Lynn Wheat.
Good evening. I want to thank staff for their thorough report. When the ordinance came up that we were going to begin to charge residents for the easement that the public sidewalks, I opposed that because I believe that we pay property tax and street maintenance fees and that those should be considered as far as improving and fixing some of the sidewalks that we have. I think to put it on residents, some of the sidewalks have held up better than others in the area, and I don't think that that's really fair and that we ought to consider that for everybody that lives in our neighborhoods and that I'd like you to reconsider the ordinance and how you go about... you to reconsider the ordinance and how you go about fixing the, the sidewalks and who's charged for them. Because for some of the families, especially if they're retired and fixed incomes, this could be a burden for them. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have nobody else signed up to speak. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close a public comment opportunity and move for council, declare the, uh, public hearing closed and move for council deliberation direction.
Move staff's recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Onto item 9.4.
9.4 is a public hearing to consider resolution adopting the adoption fee schedule for Elk Grove Animal Services. I think it's the top one in the upper right. Is that the one for 9.4? That should be it.
Right, thank you. My name's Rodney Rigo. I'm a captain with the Elk Grove Police Department, and one of my roles is overseeing animal services for, uh, for the city of Elk Grove. Uh, before us tonight is a proposal to, um, establish adoption fee schedule for animal services. As you know, in April of 2018, we began breaking ground in the construction of our own animal shelter. Um, one of the roles for the animal shelter is to house lost or, um, abandoned pets, and we want to relocate those animals either to a, uh, good home or their owners. Uh, in the absence of having our own shelter, we've been contracting with other agencies and organizations to house our animals. And part of the role is, uh, to provide adoptions for those animals. The Elk Grove Municipal Code currently allows for the, uh, the charging of adoption fees, and that's found under, um, Section 8.05.090. However, not having our own animal shelter, we've never established, uh, an adoption fee schedule. And since January of 2014, pursuant to contract, the city has adhered to the Sacramento County Animal Care and Regulation Schedule. Now, some of the considerations that staff has undertaken in evaluating what a, the adoption fee schedule would look like is looking at the national average cost to care for a dog or cat for the entirety of its time in the shelter, and that is between $350 and $700. Now, the costs being include vaccinations, food, spay and neuter, daily care, medication, veterinary services, and then the fixed facility overhead, just the costs of staff, uh, water, sewer, the normal overhead costs. And obviously, the, the longer an animal stays in the facility, the longer the, the higher the costs are going to be. Not having our own animal shelter, historically, we don't have data to, to pull from here locally. So we looked at, uh, national averages, um, some of the averages and costs that other agencies and organizations locally are charging such as, I'm sorry, such as the, uh, the county of Sacramento, the city of Sacramento, and Sacramento SPCA. It, it's not realistic to expect the revenue from an adoption fee to cover all the costs of housing and taking care of the animals. The goal is really to incentivize the adoption of the animals that are in the shelter. So these proposed, proposed fees are based on the above pricing philosophy, and then, again, what other animal shelters in the area are currently charging. Here we have our proposed adoption fee schedule. The column on the left is the, the animal and the animal type. Directly to the right is the proposed fee, and then the three columns to the right of that are the Sacramento County fees, the county of Sacramento fees, and the Sacramento SPCA, SPCA fees. Not going into detail, this was in the staff report, but just kind of highlighted a few things. Uh, there's a, a lower fee for seniors, both a person who's over 65 and then an older animal, seven years or older, um, and then a little bit higher price for exotic or equine livestock, kind of at market value. You may have noticed there's a range in the schedule, and the range allows for, uh, the irregular adoption price, which would be the top end, the high end of that price schedule, and then the flexibility for staff to provide discounts and promotions in the cases that we have, uh, high capacity, a large number of animals, and we need to move and find homes very quickly so we can avoid euthanasia, um, or animals that tend to be in the shelter for a long period of time, maybe several weeks or a month. Just acknowledging that some animals are easier to adopt than others. Uh, some older, um, maybe less popular animals create a struggle for us to, to find adequate homes. Items that are included in this adoption fee, there are services that are included in this, such as vaccinations, a one-year license, flea prevention, worm and parasite prevention, microchip and spay and neuter. Those would either be waived or could be, um, included in the regular, um, fee schedule. The fiscal impact, again, not having historical, uh, historical information, it's difficult to identify what the, um, revenue would be. We want the very, very conservative number of $500, just acknowledging that we, we don't know exactly how long the shelter would be open the first fiscal year, uh, the number of animals that will be taken in, and then our capacity and the flow rate. We were able to determine, we at least believe that there's not going to be a negative impact to revenue based off of the current budget. And with that, our staff recommends the adoption of the proposed adoption fee schedule, uh, for the Elk Grove Animal Services. And myself and animal services managers are humbly here for questions. Uh, I would like to say she's doing a fantastic, incredible job getting the animal shelter going and staffed and all the processes, uh, that are required to, to have that shelter open on a timely manner, and I want to acknowledge that right now, but we are available for any questions.
Thank you, Captain Rigo. Any questions?
No.
I do have a question, uh, with respect to the, uh, schedule that you just had on the screen there. Um, for, you explained the range, which that was one of my questions, so I appreciate that. Thank you. Why do we differentiate, uh, the weight of the dog, uh, over 20 pounds or under 20 pounds? Yeah. If you just press the button, it should come, the green light should come on.
Got it. Thank you. Um, I differentiated the weight of the dog because smaller animals are typically easier to find housing for, especially if you're renting, so they become very popular and, uh, fairly easy to adopt out. So in order to subsidize or help to subsidize the cost that, uh, a more difficult to adopt dog, like a larger dog, uh, would be, we, we charge more for those smaller dogs.
Okay. And so that's why the, you charge more for the smaller dogs. And then, uh, so kind of along that same lines, I would imagine puppies are the easiest to adopt out, so how come they would be charged the same as those smaller dogs?
Because we find that the small breed dogs that are under 20 pounds, um, typically tend to be very popular breeds, like your Yorkies, your Malteses, your mini poodles. They're just highly sought after, very desirable dogs, um, typically not hard to adopt out, and people, um, are, are willing to pay up to $150 for that as an adoption fee.
So I would agree with that, um, for the breeds that you mentioned. The last time I was in the county's facility, if it weren't for pit bulls and Chihuahuas, I don't think they'd have had a dog in their, in their pen. So I, and, and a lot of that, I believe, speaks to the maturity level of the people who adopt those or take on those dogs. So I guess I would, you know, just caution that we keep an eye on that because if we end up being overrun with Chihuahuas like the county is, that, that's going to present a problem. And then I just wanted to make sure I didn't see it in the staff report. We don't charge a surrender fee. Is that correct?
The surrender fee is already on our current, uh, fee schedule for animal control, along with the impound fees.
Okay.
If your, if your animal's impounded.
Great, thank you. Yeah, Councilmember, sir.
Yeah, well, thank you, Vice Mayor, because I, I think you made an interesting observation. Um, it's, it's pretty well-known about, especially pit bulls. And I was just wondering, as an industry, have, have you ever considered, um, because I haven't seen it in other places, considered pricing according to, to breed?
Because a lot of the dogs that come in are mixed breed, um, when we, you know, there is definitely a pit bull type or a bully breed look, uh, and, and we can certainly say that they're, they're pit bull mixes, um, but it's always typically kind of, uh, staff's educated guess or designation that we're placing on the dog. So, uh, we typically just, it's, it would start to parse hairs a little bit if we're charging this for a German Shepherd or this for a, a pit bull or this for a husky and... So we try and keep it, we try to keep it concise, as concise as we can as well to, to make it simple and straightforward for the public.
Yeah. No, thank you. Uh, but if I, if we start to see a problem, I think we should have this conversation again.
Absolutely, and that, and that's where allowing us to, uh, have some discretion at, at making promotional offers or discounting adoption fees for specific animals that we are having a hard time moving, um, gives us some flexibility on that.
Sure. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
That's where the zero works.
Amen. Uh, any other questions at this time? No? Okay, so I'll go ahead and declare the public hearing open. Uh, we will open the public comment opportunity. I have a couple of folks signed up to speak, starting with Ms. Roberta Low Taylor. Following her will be Constance Connolly.
Good evening, council people. Um, Vice Mayor Hume, I gave you a four-month break. I was in the hospital for four months, went from Saturday to Stanford. Never had, well, I never wanted to go and see another hospital again. I'm learning to speak over again, again, because I had had, lost my speech also and the ability to walk. So please be a little bit patient. I might stumble my words, but I do have a passion for animals, but I have a question for our animal control officer. I noticed that Sacramento right now is giving free adoptions for kittens because they're overrun by cats, and they get overrun by different, you know, animals that they give them out free. Are we going to do that same opportunity here in Elk Grove?
I would say yes. That's why we have a range that begins at zero.
Zero, okay. And are we going to have foster, uh, parents available to take some of the dogs so it'll ease some of the stuff over at the animal shelter too? Okay? I should just ask her. Sorry, gentlemen, and Stephanie, I don't know, you know, who'd ask this. I, and I was looking at some of the costs over there. I did look at, like they did, to all these different shelters too. Now, in the four months I was gone, the poor shelters that I donate to, I go out to different feed companies, and I hope our people would think of going over there. When that food is about to expire, I would get their food over there that they're ready to dump and take it over to shelters so they can feed their dogs and cats and everything. And I hope we do that also, so that we can coordinate with, uh, all the different feed, uh, feed, they're in grave places. That's for big animals and small animals too. So I can give you my context I have that I get cases and cases of dog food, cat food, in the, you dry and wet, and I'd be more than happy to supply. The, it was all stacked up at my house when I was in the hospital. My poor husband didn't know where to take it to. When I got out of there, I had to drop off, borrow people's trucks so that I could drop off all the dog food because no, my car didn't fit in my own garage. So that's all I was just trying, trying to say. I wanted to make sure that we have provisions to get these animals out there to good people that really want them and not overcharge also, and have different opportunities out there for everybody to partake with the animals. Sorry, but I know my speech is bad, and I apologize for that, but the fact that I'm standing here and wasn't, actually was in a coma for two weeks, and my doctor, because my phone kept going off in the hospital, because you know I'm very avid about bullying and everything else, and I still getting all the emails and everything, calls over there, he took the phone and told my husband, "She cannot have it here." So they took my phone away for four months, basically. I got, I felt like I was naked with no phone. Now I've got it back, and I think, sorry, now that I've got my voice back too, but no, I just wanted, I'll give you my number and my, you know, contact information. I just wanted to make sure we had some provisions for some of the animals that I've been using as far as to feed all these animals. And that's all I have to really say. Thank you really for the time.
Well, thank you and welcome back, and I hope you have no hospitals in your future, and I'll say that without the support of passionate volunteers...
Well, I have a rare disorder which actually are Asian American people here. It's called Moya Moya. There's only two surgeons that are very good at that, and the one is in Japan and one is at Stanford. The one at Stanford is teaching the rest of the doctors all around the United States. Japan is doing all the international stuff, and it's called a puff of smoke is what it is, and it's something that, it's genetically in our genes somehow. Our parents or whatever, we, they thought they just had strokes. Actually, it's not that. They have what this is, the genetic disease here, and it can be fixed. It doesn't, it's not cured, but it can still be fixed, but it's usually with young people. And I says, "I'm only half Asian. How did I get it?" And I'm old. I bet, they go, "It shouldn't be somebody else, not me." They go, "Sorry, you just beat the odds there for some reason to, uh, you're older and you're only half, but it just took you in, in at that same time."
Well, I wish you a full recovery.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's good to see you again, Ms. Roberta.
It's nice to see you too, Stephanie.
Next up is Constance Connolly. Sorry. Constance Connolly?
You pulled a Dan Briggs.
Totally by accident.
I know once we get up and running with our animal shelter and, um, those of us that have adopted animals, I happen to have adopted as a puppy, um, my little Bella, which is a Siberian Husky. However, she was severely abused when she was a puppy, so with that, um, comes behavioral issues. And it's not just to, uh, adopt a dog and get, put it into a family. When you see a cute little puppy, oftentimes, there's behavioral issues and training that's involved. So I'm hoping that when, when we have, we're up and running and, and time, we get a behaviorist that we can hire, or maybe one of our animal control people can teach classes on how to deal with, uh, an adopted animal that has been abused, so they don't go home and maybe offer some training, because when you do adopt a puppy that has been abused, um, there's a lot of work involved. And, um, I know with my Bella, um, I'm not giving up on her, but, um, it's been tough, and if I, I have sought out, you know, experts to help me with her, even going to Davis, and it's, it's a long trek. If I could do it locally, and I'm sure Bella's not the only puppy that's ever going to be abused, but if we can be proactive with our residents and adoption in the future to help them, um, navigate through dealing with an abused, um, animal and how to train them and how to acclimate them into your homes, I think it would be most helpful in not, in them not being, they get the puppy home, it's cute, you love it, you have problems with it, can't deal with it, so you give it back. And we don't want that to happen. I mean, I've had Bella for five years now, and, um, there's been many a time where I've been in tears thinking, "What am I going to do with this dog? She was so abused." But I just can't give up on her. So if I had some help here in Elk Grove, I would certainly, um, seek it out, and I know other people who are animal lovers would do the same. So I'd like you to keep that in mind.
Thank you. I think that's a great idea. All right, uh, nobody else signed up to speak? Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment opportunity. I'll declare the public hearing closed and go to council deliberation in action.
Move staff's recommendation.
Second.
All right, a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item, onto item 10.1.
And item 10.1 will be to receive information and provide direction on the process to explore options for reducing the use or banning of single-use expanded polystyrene food service containers in Elk Grove, including the possible formation of a committee to explore options.
Good evening, council members. Heather Neff, Recycling and Waste Manager. The item before you this evening is to consider options for reducing the use of expanded polystyrene in Elk Grove. On May 22nd, council received a presentation from local students who requested that council consider a ban on single-use expanded polystyrene, or EPS for short, and commonly known by the brand name Styrofoam. During the public comment portion of that meeting, council heard from a number of additional speakers who provided alternative suggestions on how to reduce the use of EPS. Staff is recommending that the council provide direction on which, if any of those options, council would like staff to pursue. And to review those options briefly, in the order in which they were heard, uh, first, council heard a suggestion to encourage students to work with stakeholders to reduce litter with a focus on food service packaging. The second suggestion heard was to wait for CalRecycle to finish the regulatory process on SB 1335, which would require food service packaging at state facilities to be reusable, recyclable, or compostable. And as part of that regulatory process, the state will perform an analysis of food service packaging issues, the results of which may inform local policies. The third... The third suggestion heard was consistent with the student presentation, to draft an ordinance to ban or restrict the use of single-use EPS food service containers. And then finally, there was a suggestion to create a committee to research the impacts of EPS, such as cost to businesses, health impacts, and environmental impacts, and then report back to council accordingly. If council chooses that option, there are a number of formations that that type of committee could take, including an ad hoc committee, which would be comprised of council members. That committee would not be subject to the Brown Act, and interested persons could participate in the meetings. A council-created committee would be comprised of council members and non-council members as formal committee members. The membership would not change over the course of the committee, and that would be subject to Brown Act requirements. A third type is a designated committee of stakeholders, which would be comprised of individuals appointed by council. The membership would not change over the course of the committee, and that would be subject to Brown Act requirements. And then finally, council could direct staff to do informal staff-led discussions with stakeholders. They would be non-specified stakeholders, and would report back to council on the impacts of EPS, and that type of committee would not be subject to Brown Act requirements. Before I conclude my presentation, I do want to make you aware of a potential fifth option that was not included in the staff report, because we just received some additional information about this option in the last couple of days. And that would be to monitor, monitor the progress of the proposed AB ten eighty and SB fifty-four, which are companion bills, known as the California Circular Economy and Plastic Pollution Reduction Act. This would, these bills would apply to all single-use packaging and priority single-use products, which would be determined by those most prevalent in litter. As currently written under this bill, if any single-use packaging item is not recyclable or compostable, business owners would have to seek alternative materials by 2030. This could potentially impact EPS, because the, the site would consider a number of factors in determining whether or not an item is recyclable, that essentially boil down to, is it easily and regularly recycled, recycled? If council does choose this option, and it does, the bill does not ultimately impact EPS, or if the bills do not pass, staff would then return for further direction from council. That concludes my presentation, and I would be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Very good. Any questions for Heather at this point? No? Okay. In that case, I'll go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. I have quite a few of you signed up to speak, and we have several items still to go yet tonight, so if you could keep your comments concise, that would be appreciated, starting with Becky Warren, followed by Rosie Diaz.
Hi, good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Becky Warren, I'm here on behalf of Dart Container. We are proud to be a partner with the city of Elk Grove with our drop-off foam recycling program, and that also, many of our employees live here in the city, with our facility in Lodi, not too far away. Dart is, as you all know, is working with the city on the drop-off location for, that recycles both fo- foam food service containers and foam packaging. And it's picked up usually about every other week, and it is then recycled at the Lodi facility. We stand ready to work with you on a comprehensive and effective solution that could further reduce litter and waterways, and reduce landfill waste. We, we don't believe that a solution is a ban. Foam foods, foam food service containers is less than one and a half percent of the waste stream, so ban will not really help with the challenge on how to reduce litter or reduce landfill waste. As we mentioned before, bans are also very costly, and the alternative sometimes cannot be recycled. So we really urge that, we wanna be a part, we, we are a part here in this city, and we want to continue to be a partner with you, and we would love to be a part of a conversation for a more comprehensive solution, to actually help reduce litter, and also help reduce more landfill waste. Any other questions that might come up, we're happy to answer. And I also have Rosie, who I believe is the next person that works at the Lodi facility, too.
Great, thank you. Next up, Rosie Diaz. Following Rosie will be Matt Sutton.
Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Rosie Diaz. I'm currently working at Dart Container in Lodi, and I've been at the, working for the company for more than thirty years. Currently, I am the quality control manager. We employ several hundred employees, many who live here in Lodi, like Becky mentioned. I'm proud to work for a company that not only manufactures quality product, but also cares about the environmental stro- uh, sorry, stewardship. As part of our commitment, we have worked with the city, as Becky mentioned, and in addition, we have regularly participated in American, the American River cleanup, once a year. As a local business, we are here to offer the city council and students a tour into our facility, and it, at our, at any time that you wish to tour the, the place. And we can also demonstrate what we do with foam recycling. Every day, which can be, remain effective, we make various products, like, such as frames or crown molding. And we appreciate the leadership of the city council of identifying effective ways, such as the drop-off location that makes recycling more accessible for the residents. We stand ready to continue to work with the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Matt Sutton. Following Mr. Sutton is Lauren Scott.
Good evening, my name is Matt Sutton, I'm with the California Restaurant Association. We represent a lot of small independent mom-and-pop restaurants, your community-based restaurants that are throughout your city, and we thought the discussion a few weeks back was really productive. Certainly appreciate the, the viewpoints and passion that the students brought, and your continued thoughtful deliberation on the issue. And, and so for us, we're the end users of food packaging products, of course. We do, as a restaurant community, take litter abatement incredibly seriously. We have a lot of restaurants that are involved in local community cleanup events, but for us, we do oppose bans, and we oppose bans on dip products, because what we do support is compostability and recyclability. So if food packaging products are indeed recyclable and compostable, that is something that we think should be encouraged. We support further investments in infrastructure for that purpose. I said last time, and I didn't mean it in a joking manner, but, you know, people that litter, they don't pick what they litter based on the composition of that material. So the litter issue i- is a real issue, but it's not one that's done based on the type of material that we're talking about. So we don't like to pick winners and losers between different products of food packaging, so that we have a robust available packaging market. It was mentioned by staff that one of the considerations is this larger issue that's going on, on single-use products, plastics in particular, but also all food packaging. And that was a law that was put in, to place last year, that is underway now, that looks at all food packaging on state facilities. And the idea there is to have CalRecycle do a robust sort of set of metrics and analysis on different food packaging materials to determine what are acceptable in terms of recyclable and compostable food packaging. So that'll sort of be a blessed list when they're done with that process. That process is underway now. We're a part of that discussion, and we think that that looks at it as a comprehensive, holistic approach on food packaging, and what is recyclable and compostable. So again, that is underway. We do think that the results of that, we don't know what they'll look like as, as the end users of the product, but we think that the process is really good, and it avoids picking and choosing different products on, on a somewhat discriminatory basis. So I just wanna thank the council, each of you, because I thought the discussion last time was, was really good, and I'd encourage you to take a, a long-term look at this, and a comprehensive look at this, as opposed to focusing in on, on one single type of food packaging product. There were some restaurants here earlier that did have to leave, but I wanted to share that. I think some of them have shared letters with you. If not, we're happy to provide those. But I'm here to offer our assistance on food packaging and, and restaurant perspective, and be a productive participant in the conversation going forward. And we would encourage you to not look at bans, but to look at comprehensive approaches. So thank you.
Thank you. Lauren Scott. Following Ms. Scott is Luisa Aguirre.
Hello, good evening, members of the city council. My name is Lauren Scott, and I work for the American Chemistry Council. Our association includes the Plastic Food Service Packaging Group, which represents the leading manufacturers and suppliers of all types of food service packaging. I just wanna first echo, you know, our support of these important goals, such as reducing litter, and reducing waste, and keeping packaging out of our oceans. We would also support staff recommendation to create a partnership between the students and the stakeholders, to kind of work on some of these big issues, and find some comprehensive policy solutions. We also would agree that moving forward with stakeholder engagement would be greatly beneficial in terms of developing any sort of policy. It would allow the city to gather information from various stakeholders, and, you know, find out about the, the various impacts to industry, to the community, to consumers, and to local businesses here in Elk Grove. Whatever form this process takes, whether it be establishing a committee or a staff-led discussion, we would support a process of stakeholder engagement that is open and inclusive. Also, it's important to note that this policy, or any sort of policy on this issue, would actually impact more than just one company. You know, we, we've talked about one here, but our, our association represents a whole host of companies that would be impacted by such a policy, and that should have a seat at the table in terms of developing any policy solutions. Finally, I want to echo what, you know, has been stated. It, it might make sense for the city to let some of the processes at the state level play out in terms of, you know, pending legislation that is addressing very comprehensively all sorts of packaging materials. And also to kind of let CalRecycle develop some framework relating to food service packaging, and then possibly allow that to inform the, the councils and the city's policies. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Luisa Aguirre, followed by Allison Yi.
Hello, my name is Luisa Aguirre, and I am part of the Elk Grove High School Environmentalist Club. And I would like to say that even though it's one percent of the trash that it makes up, it still is a big factor that plays out in the sea, the trash, the EPS is bad for our health, but the other people don't see it from Dart. You know, us going there won't really do anything, so if you guys just ban it, it's just one step of us getting to the future cleanliness in this community. So just, it's easy to just ban it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I apologize for mispronouncing your name. Allison Yi. Following Allison Yi is Addie Partington.
Hi, my name is Allison Yi. I am part of COHS and EG's environmental clubs, and I'm here today to talk about expanded polystyrene. Now, I'm pretty sure we've all know, we've all heard of the presentation that we gave on May twenty-second about how styrofoam is harmful to us, and to the environment, to plants and animals and such. I want to talk about that, like, we can, we can make change happen, really. I mean, what, what my fellow up here just said about how styrofoam is just one percent, I just wanna echo that it is really still a big part. One percent, if we ban styrofoam, is still one step closer to a better future. It's still making a change happen in our lives, and we, in twenty years, styrofoam probably will be banned. You know, we're, if we ban it now, we can, we're just ahead of the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Addie Partington. Following Addie is Tony Tran.
Good evening, my name's Addie Partington, and I'm a member of EGHS's environmental club. I wanted to say that I'm in support of an ordinance that would only allow a hundred percent recyclable or compostable food containers in Elk Grove. I don't believe that a committee or anything else would really help this issue. I feel like we've been dragging it out for like a month now, maybe even more, and I think if we did that, it would just keep being a discussion, and nothing would really happen. I think an ordinance, or the bad scary word ban would, you know, be better, because then it would just be gone, and we could just move on. A lot of people don't like the word ban, I think, because it's like, what are we gonna do if we don't have styrofoam anymore? But as you know, we've discussed many other options. There's a lot of different containers that are recyclable and compostable, so. And I wanted to say that I don't think this idea can be all about making everyone in Elk Grove happy, because you guys know that's not possible. I think it's about doing what's right. And, you know, you've heard a lot of sides of the story, I guess, but I think deep down you all know exactly what's right, and that's banning styrofoam. And my classmates and I, you know, we come here, you've seen us all the time, and, you know, we don't get paid to do this. We're just kids. We did all that research on our own, we've had help from teachers, of course, but, you know, we're just kids. Like, this is just something that we're passionate about. The people from Dart, and the American Chemistry Council, and whatever, they all get paid to do this. They probably, well, I can't say they don't care as much, 'cause they're here, too, but we're just gonna keep coming back because we care so much. And you've heard that we have supporters, we have supporters in the district. You know, even in these meetings, you've heard people say, like, those kids are doing such a good job. And, you know, people from Dart, whoever, might come back, too, that's just to be expected. But we're just gonna keep coming back. If this goes to a committee, or whatever else, you know, we're not gonna be happy. I'm not gonna be happy, anyway, and I'm just gonna keep coming back and being like, hey, you know what? You know what's right, so do what's right. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony Tran. Following Tony Tran is William Myers. Tony, are you still here? Apparently he left. William Myers, and following William Myers is Trina Lee.
Report on an idea, make it quick. I got really interested after that meeting we had here the other day, and I drank coffee, and I didn't know where the polystyrene in these cups. So I used some personal contacts, and I got to the back office of the headquarters of one of the major coffee companies here. Here's a scope, reduced, okay? They agree, all across the board, allowing for some quibbles here and there. They agree both on the, on the environmental and on the toxicity issues. They think that polystyrene should be replaced. They know how to do that. Problem, there is a cost. They say they are on record, on backing, in other cities, they've been entering the city, they are on record as, as welcoming bans, because they create a level playing field. They said, they said to me that their experience is, that makes no difference in customers, that the few cents it costs to provide, you know, a fully compostable, you know, safe cup, has absolutely no effect on sales. It does have an effect on competition if one company wants to do it and others don't. So they said they are on record as supporting ordinances, right? So, so the playing field is level, and they said, once they have that in the field there. They think they're three or four years, the industry is three or four years away, from a, a product that will become roughly to the, to the cost level that they're at. They said that's, everybody's working on that, but, but right now, they said they would welcome, it would welcome a ban. Now, the idea. I got really interested in watching that. What you don't know about me is I'm an educator. I just, I'm interested in all kinds of education, except schools. So training, and, and internships, all that kind of thing, is what I spent a lot of my life doing. And I got really interested in these kids, and I started thinking about stuff, you know, and I visited several times with Heather Neff. And I got to thinking, you know, hmm, you know, that's a real model there. You know, and, and, and she knows her business really well. You know, I found her, you know, very objective, wonderful explainer. You know, wouldn't it be- You know, wouldn't it be kind of a good thing if, as a practice, as a city, we sort of had a way to bring our kids, I'm thinking of our high school students here, okay, and some of these problems that we have, and actually sort of make that a policy to be welcoming and bring them to these discussions? And I thought, you know, why not use this for that? Why not follow, why not follow option 4D? So, leave it to the staff to put it together. The staff's job is to consult with everybody and bring it in. In this particular case, I have, as you can tell, I have great confidence in your staff member. But, you know, we have a bigger fish to fry. And that's preparing our young people to learn how. How do we have these debates? How do we, how do we find that everybody is, you know, we don't just have villains and heroes, you know? You know, everybody has their different ways in getting at it. Why can't we just sort of maybe use this as an opportunity to really do some good education? Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Trina Lee. Following Trina Lee is Randy Becker.
Hi there.
Good evening.
I am in favor of a citywide ordinance that would require environmentally appropriate food packaging, and yes, that would include a ban on EPS. One thing my students have taught me in this process is that EPS is not ordinary litter. It is particularly pernicious. It is toxic. And we have an opportunity right now to have healthier businesses, healthier employees, and healthier consumers, healthier food, healthier community. We can do that right now. Just a couple of weeks ago, I was in Fort Bragg, California, like my super happy place when I'm not here in Elk Grove. And after our meal, they brought us all kinds of containers for the leftovers, different sizes, shapes for different stuff, all of it completely compostable. And I asked, well, is this difficult for you folks to find this? And the server seemed even surprised at the question. She was rather young, and this is just how they do in Fort Bragg. When I went back and did the research, they've had an ordinance for sustainable food packaging since 2014. So, this isn't wild. This isn't extreme. This is being done all over the state. We can do it too, and I really hope you'll consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy Becker. And following Randy is somebody named Mackenzie Weezer. Who?
Vice Mayor, Council. When the youth of our city brought this up the last meeting, I had conversations with a couple of you about giving them the opportunity to have this vetted through a committee. I think any change, we need to vet it to fully understand what the impacts are, what's the best practices. We just heard of one. However, do we know that's the best practice? Also, with the change in the garbage, what I understand that's been going around here for the last year, how is that going to impact? I think it's important for the staff to be involved. I think it's important for the current companies to be involved. I think it's important, especially for the youth, to see the fruit bared from the trees they've planted. It's going to be their city. You've heard me before. This is their city. We're just here for a short time. Let them be a part of it. But at the same time, they have to understand, as the young lady spoke earlier, we want things done now. That's just normal. But unfortunately, it takes time for me to negotiate with you and you and you and you and all these folks up here because everybody's got a stake and everybody's got a mind. I don't think a ban is the correct way of going today, tomorrow. I do think that if vetted properly, that we could find the end result quickly. And I would think within the next three or four months, we should have some type of an answer if they're that, if they want to be that much involved. I think it could be done in short order. But I think the staff pulling everyone together and coming up with a solution, we could come with, up with something that belongs to us that is the best practices. Thank you.
Okay. Mackenzie Weezer. Following Mackenzie is Ameriko.
Evening, Council. Mackenzie Weezer here. I just wanted to let you all know that you have an opportunity to be brave, be courageous, and not follow the dollars. Like our student said, they're not getting paid to come here. I'm not getting paid. I'm keeping my six-year-old up till 8:30, 8:45 at night to come here because I care. Because I care about what our kids are going to be dealing with in the future. I work for the state. If you guys want to wait for the state to roll something out to make action by 2030, we're too late. I know. I work on this every single day. I work on climate policy. I'm so excited to have your bike in here, by the way. I'll comment on that later. I'll keep my kid up later for that. We've got to take action, and we've got to take it now. We don't have time to wait. And you know what? Once everybody's on the same page with the fact that we care about this planet, we're not going to care to bring our own containers to the restaurant, to bring our soup home in. Believe me, that's going to happen. And we have to take, we have to take our time now to make brave and outlandish decisions. The city of Orlando just passed an ordinance to have zero single-use plastic in all of its amusement parks and in the entire city itself. So, you go to Disney World, you don't get a cup. You bring your own. So, jump on board or wait for the rest of the world to do it. But I don't think you guys want to be that type of leader. You've got kids, you've got your school board here. The kids didn't, failed to mention to you. They went and chatted with the school board. The school boards removed styrofoam from their ordering lists altogether. It didn't even need to be an action item. They're already on it. Think about it.
Thank you. Ameriko. And following Ameriko is Constance Conley.
Hi. How are you doing?
Good evening.
Hi. I just came to speak to say that economically, it's kind of hard to do the banning. The styrofoam we use is recyclable, so I don't know if there's another way you can recycle the styrofoam we use. I work for L. Harding Restaurant.
I saw your letter, yeah.
Okay. I really don't have too much to say, but economically, it'll be kind of hard. And is there a way we can recycle the styrofoam? Because we use recycled styrofoam. Is there another way?
If that concludes your comments, I'd like to ask you a couple of questions, if I may.
Okay.
So, have you looked into the cost of using an alternate container other than styrofoam?
Yes, we have. It's about double.
Okay. And have, and do you only use styrofoam for to-go containers?
Yes. And for customers who take the food out.
Sure, yeah. Doggy bag or whatever you want to call it, yeah. Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay.
I have a question. When you say it's double, double what? What is the base price?
Cost, well, it'll be, like, let's say you pay, I'm using a round number right now, but let's say 10 cents a container, it'll be 20 cents. So, it doesn't sound like a lot, you know, but when you're adding other costs like labor and food costs has gone up, it does add to the cost.
I get it. I just wanted to have something in contents of...
Order of magnitude.
Yeah, order of magnitude. So, okay, that's fair. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, Constance Conley.
Got it right this time, Patrick. Couple things. I need, there's a question. What is your definition of a healthy community? A healthy community certainly would start where we would protect our environment. Now, I think I remember one of the students saying at the last presentation on May 22nd, it said $400 to go from styrofoam to another recyclable container. I remember years ago bringing forth a small business incentive program. Is it in there in the proposal, and I didn't read it, sorry, Heather, that if we could ask our local businesses, our restaurants, to do a voluntary program? And since we have that small business incentive program, if they needed an extra little kick, that they could fill out something that they want to do this voluntarily, and if we have money in the small business incentive program, and they qualify, give them the $400 so then they can use that money towards the new packaging. If Panera can do it, other restaurants can do it too, and that includes soup. Because, I don't know about you, but buying wonton soup in a plastic container, by the time you get it home, the lid is melted. And, into my soup? I don't want to eat that. So, just a thought. Because if we do have that money, Jason, you can find it, that we could do that if it's a voluntary program, and then we can get our students going to those restaurants and saying, here, we have another restaurant that has gone voluntary. And then it'll be a big ripple effect. And you know what? I don't know about you, but these young people, they'll go from restaurant to restaurant to restaurant, and they'll advocate for their cause, and I, my money's on them. So, again, what is your definition of a healthy community, and does it include styrofoam? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have nobody else signed up to speak. So, I'll go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and go to Council Deliberation and Direction. Who wants to kick it off?
I'll kick it off.
Councilmember, when?
You know, I want to thank our young people for coming out and speaking and being on top of this. I'm really impressed. From day one, when you came out and you took this full on, and you've been here at every single meeting since then and talking about the health impacts of this. So, I am really proud of you and working with young people and watching. I work with young people every day, and watching you do this makes me really proud of what you're doing for our city. But I will say that we have quite a few letters from our local restaurants here in our city as well, too, that are asking us to not ban it, right? And so, for us here, and I think Mr. Myers made a great point about the process and having educational opportunities. And one of the things that I push with young people is that decisions can't always be made right away and shouldn't be made, you know, right on the spot. And that if we can cultivate stakeholders' partnerships, roundtables, discussion, and having an opportunity for you to learn from one another, because I bet the DART containers and the other folks would learn from hearing from you and what you have to say as well, too. And what I'm hearing is that they do want to have this healthy discussion. I heard a lot about having a comprehensive approach. I'm not saying that we don't ban styrofoam, but I'm not also saying that we do ban styrofoam. What I'm saying is that I'd like to see a healthy conversation, probably even a debate between the two of you or the two sides in talking about what's the best way to move this forward. I don't think that we should ban it immediately because I think there is a process in which we should make sure that our small businesses have an opportunity to find alternatives to be able to package their to-go items. Ms. Constance Conley talked about soup and how as the plastic is on there and by the time she gets home, it's into her soup. Well, I will say that for the Vietnamese restaurants around here in their pho broth, they put it in styrofoam. But if you ban styrofoam, they will put it in the plastic containers. And that's absolutely worse than the styrofoam that they put it in. And so, I ask that maybe we, you know, I'm for option D. I want to hear from the rest of my colleagues, but I support option D, which is having a staff-led and a committee made up of our young people and other stakeholders and having a conversation on how we move this forward.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Detrick.
There's been a lot of great comments tonight, you know. Bill, I think you're dead on with your evaluation on, and I supported. Hopefully, if option D goes through, that is what I support. And hopefully that you would be, consider being involved with that as well as many of the people in the room here. We need to have everybody involved. Because I think partly what we need to do in that analysis is we come back with what those alternatives are. We helped do the research, so when we go to these businesses, say, hey, you know, here's where we're going to go. Here's the alternatives. Instead of just saying, here's a ban, figure it out, we can be part of the solution on it. And definitely want the students involved as well as all the other stakeholders. So, you know, again, thanks for all of you coming out tonight. This is, you know, this is a very important item. I don't disagree at all. But I think we have to do it once and do it right. And to do that, we have to take a more comprehensive approach, and I support option D.
Okay. Councilmember Soon.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I think we can all agree that we want a cleaner environment. We want a cleaner city. I don't think there's any argument about that at all. I think the debate is how we go about it and when we go about it. And absolutely, I heard earlier, it is easy to ban. It is easy to make that decision. But I also tell you that none of us up here have never been lobbied by somebody who wasn't sure that their position was the best decision. And so, we're, you know, in this role, and what you are all learning about advocacy is one thing, but governing is something else. And in governing, you have to listen to both sides. You have to take in all the information. And what you heard tonight, at least from one restaurant owner, but I have a whole stack here, as my colleagues do, that we can share with you about people's lives, livelihoods that are affected by this decision. And it's not because, so it's not because we don't want a cleaner environment. It's not because, I think there's valid data out there that show the toxicity of styrofoam. But there's also information that shows it's recyclable. And there's information that shows that these restaurant owners, these businesses, these people who have families themselves use it for in their daily lives. Their patrons use it. Maybe some of you or some of your family's patrons patron some of these restaurants. And of course, it's your decision if you choose not to anymore. But the fact is, it's part of our lives right now. I know certain communities have taken the measure, as Ms. Weezer mentioned, about in Orlando. And there's a reason why I think the state is trying to lead the way on this. And if you notice, the state could have also made the decision easy and just banned it statewide. But I think if you look at all levels of government, there's a recognition that the conversation must be had. The bill that was mentioned, SB 1335, I had a conversation earlier tonight at the event that I was at from the person who oversaw CalRecycle and gave me a little bit more details about that bill and the necessity of finding a replacement. And if you're a business, there's one of these things about, one of us, these things about us, this city, being good for business is predictable processes. And what you don't want to do also is have a decision made by the gentleman that was up here earlier, tell him or her to switch to one thing, only to find out, and from when I heard Mr. Myers say, three to four years away, a few years later, switch it again. And so, you're incurring costs both times to bring in, get rid of the old, bring in the new, get rid of the new again, and then now bring in the third product. So, those are the uncertain things that affect a small business and things that we have to be conscientious of. And so, I do support my colleague's statements earlier about, you know, having staff and all of you at the table for a decision, learning from one another. I think, you know, the Restaurant Association, the DART facilities, I think everybody has something to offer. All of us can learn from each other. And so, with that, you know, I'm also advocating for option D. And I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'll pick up right where you left off. And first of all, I want to thank the young students that brought this to a discussion and to a head so that we'd actually talk about it. And stay passionate, stay involved, keep caring. But I was a little discouraged by something that a couple of you said where you sort of dismissed the other side, that you have nothing to learn there. There's no reason to be engaged with them. You always have something to learn from the other side, if only how to better craft your argument to defeat them at a later date, okay? So, just remember that, that there's always something to learn from the other side. But in doing some research on this, I had my eyes opened a little bit in that there are sort of pros, if you will, of why styrofoam or EPS is so prevalent. One of them is it's really good insulating properties, and so, you're able to keep warm food above a dangerous contaminant level. But the other thing that has been taken into consideration is the, how light it is. And so, if you force a different type of container, you could be increasing the carbon footprint it costs to ship that new container. So, there's always something else out there. But I have to say that when this first came up, just philosophically, I'm opposed to implementing a ban. a ban. And I will say, and councilmember Soon mentioned this, you can't just say that it's easy to ban something, because it's, maybe it looks like it's 10 cents per container for a small business, but that's 100% increase in that cost. You know, and for the folks at DART, I mean, you may not approve of what they're doing, but what they're doing is putting food on their family's table and sending their kids to school. So you have to take these things into consideration before you just announce an edict. However, in further thinking about this, I thought, you know what? If we hadn't banned DDT, there might not be any more California condors. They may be gone already. So I think there is a time when it's appropriate to step in, because the industry is not self-regulating. But I think our immediate term issue, and kind of the issue that brought this to, for you, the young students to speak out, has to do with what was brought up, which is the actual waste stream and how we are keeping the littering from happening. Because I don't think, although EPS doesn't break down, it, what goes to the landfill is the main problem. What ends up on our sides of our streets and in our creeks and all of that thing is the problem. So I would have been in favor of a whole lot of the solutions the staff is bringing forward. I do think it's a dynamic-changing environment from the state standpoint. It sounds like D is the way my colleagues want to go, so I'm happy to go that way. But just always remember that you have something to learn from engaging folks with different viewpoints. Yeah, councilmember Soon.
Vice Mayor, well, first of all, I just want to echo that sentiment about hearing the other side. I mean, that's what we appear to do on every single item, hearing the other, having to hear other, I won't say other side, because that implies opposition, but just different perspectives. And that's where, I totally agree with that. But I wanted to add on something. I thought Ms. Connolly had an intriguing idea about voluntary switches. And I was wondering, at least from a budget perspective, if folks would be interested in, I'd like to find out maybe if staff could order magnitude estimate of what, you know, supporting a program like that would be. And then we could decide whether it's worth the investment on this issue. That's something that my colleagues would be interested in.
Well, I think that would be an outproduct of these staff-led discussions.
Yeah, that could, it would, when they, if they come back with whatever their conversation, how that goes, that would be an option that we could look at as well.
Absolutely. And I would sort of send that edict to the restaurateurs, the Restaurant Association folks, and the industry folks. I mean, the shot has been fired over the bow, change is a-coming. And you would be better, behoove yourself to engage early on at how to manage that change than to dig in and resist it.
One of the things that would be an unintended consequence with that is you have the folks that have already been doing the right thing. So you'd have to reward both sides, I think. You couldn't just say, hey, the people that have not been doing it are getting rewarded, and the people that have been doing it went above and beyond on their own, in essence, would be penalized from those rewards. I think you have to look at both sides.
That's very valid, yep.
Okay, is that good enough?
Hey, if you do tour, I still would like an invite. If you guys go on the tour of the facility, I'd like to see it myself. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item 10.2, please.
10.2 is to receive a report on the bike-share pilot program for Elk Grove and provide direction as appropriate.
Evening again, councilmembers. Christopher Jordan, 10.2, as the clerk mentioned, is a report on our pilot bike-share program. Assistant me this evening is Katie Sims with Gotcha Bike. She's rolling out the vehicle units that will be deployed as part of the pilot.
All right.
I have a short presentation. Katie's going to jump in at some point and talk about them as an operator, and then we'll come back at the end and talk about some of the future steps. Just a little recap, we did talk with you back in, spring of 2018 regarding options about deploying a city bike-share program. There was concerns identified at the time about a city-funded program, which are what all the options we were looking at included. And your direction at that time was to explore some other options rather than just directly jumping into a city-funded operation. Since then, staff has been working with the Sacramento area council of governments and identified a grant opportunity that we were awarded last fall. We've been working with SECOG staff to work through that grant program. And essentially, the focus of the grant is to explore questions around the operation of a bike-share program in a suburban context. There are not many examples of this type of program around the country or even around the world. Most of these programs, as we'll talk about tonight, are in more urban centers. You see them typically very successfully in downtown Sacramento. So with that sort of context, what could a program look like in a suburban context? How would it deploy? Some of the technical questions we're looking at. Similar questions were posed by Ranch, Grove, and Folsom through the 50 Corridor Transportation Management Agency, 50 Corridor TMA, and we all actually applied for the same grant. And SECOG has put us all together with each of the three jurisdictions, receiving a $50,000 grant towards the pilot. So what is bike-share? Simply put, it's a system of bikes, or as the market's moving towards scooters, for short-term rental basis for point-to-point travel. Essentially, you're at point A, you need to get to point B, it's a little further than you'd like to walk. This provides you an alternative mode than getting in your vehicle and driving somewhere. Typically, users pay a fee for the time that they're using the bikes. There may be an unlock charge and then a price per minute or a price per distance that you would then pay to use the equipment. As I mentioned, these are popular in urban areas, also tourist districts, corporate campuses and universities see them quite often, or near transit-oriented developments as a way to sort of extend the reach once you're using a transit system. There are two primary types of systems or models for these. First are the dock-based models, where bikes return to a specific station location or hub location, and that's where the journey either starts or stops for them. The second model are referred to as dockless. Essentially, these bikes can be left really anywhere as long as they are locked to some sort of equipment, preferably a bike rack, but we often see them parked to things like street signs, utility poles. But that bike, that lock needs to be engaged in order for the ride to be complete. The dockless model is essentially what is operating by and large, more in the Sacramento context with the jump bike system. And as we'll talk tonight, the proposal here for this pilot program is a dock-based model. So a little bit different. As I mentioned, we do have the SECOG grant. SECOG has led the effort on this after their award of the grants earlier this year. They started with a request for proposals, just after the first year, that went out to a number of vendors. A lot of proposals were received between the jurisdictions and SECOG, we reviewed them, and focused on Gotcha as the selected vendor in all three cases. So SECOG takes care of all the contracting at this point. There's no direct contracting between any of the cities or Gotcha. Through our member relationship with SECOG, all that has been handled. Their contract was executed just last month, at the end of May, so Gotcha's ready to start working on the deployment plan and get these units out into the field so we can start seeing how they're used. As a pilot program, it is just that, it is a step towards what could ultimately possibly be a full deployment around the city. We are looking at a restricted area where the program would work and a restricted number of units. Under the grants, SECOG is funding the first 50 devices. At a staff level, we're recommending that those 50 units be split between 40 eAssist bikes, so there's a battery pack that helps to assist with your motion on the bike, allows you to get a little bit more extended range than a traditional bicycle would. Well, we're also looking at 10 eAssist scooters, so these are battery-operated scooters that, again, similarly would allow you to go a further distance than a traditional scooter would. We are focusing on this split primarily because we see in other jurisdictions issues that have arisen through traditionally sole scooter operations. Those units don't lock to racks, they have to be parked in certain ways, they have a tendency of falling down, they're a little bit easier to move around than a bike would be. So we want to dip our toe a little bit more into that as a mode choice and see how they operate in the Elk Grove context before deploying more. So that's why we've chosen the 40-10 split here. As I mentioned, this is a hub-based model or a dock-based system, and Katie will talk through some of the details of that. The contract term with SECOG is five years, so that would be the length of the pilot as we're setting up at this point. And this would be a geofence service area. What that means is this is a controlled rollout. So we're putting just the 50 units into a refined or focused area of the city to see how this works, how people are using it. We've chosen an area for the pilot that is as diverse, as diverse as we can possibly make it. Essentially, it's a one-mile radius based on the Century movie theaters off of Big Horn. This focus area would then include the employment areas along Longleaf and Laguna Springs, including the City Hall campus. It would include retail destinations on Laguna Boulevard corridor, all the way from Target at one end to 99 on the other. It encompasses Civic Hall, the Civic Center complex, you've got a number of medical services that are in the area, as well as a number of hotels. So the intent here is we're able to capture all these different uses and see how folks use it based on time of day, day of week, what activities are going on in the area. We can get the sort of ridership data aggregated out from Gotcha and look at that and compare it with what's going on in the community and how folks are utilizing it. So the hub system, these, again, these are basically bike racks, if you will, where the bikes and the scooters get parked. Devices must be parked here at the end of the ride. The intent here is they will be located on private property, that is the objective. We are not looking at any of these being located either in the street or on the sidewalk. We don't think there's a good locations at this point. We could evaluate as the system potentially expands in the future, but for now, this would all be on private property. In terms of where those locations would be, the grant gives us about eight to 10 hubs to actually deploy. We will be looking at that with Gotcha to see where in their recommendation some of these should go. Obviously, City Hall and the Civic Center campus are two areas where we think hubs will be located. We'll be reaching out to the property owner at Correctional Health Facility to see if there's an opportunity to locate at least one there. The hotels are another great candidate, as are some of the retail centers. Getting into the user rates, these are set by contract between Gotcha and SECOG. So you can see here, if you go with a pay-as-you-go plan, which many folks may, it's a $2 unlock fee and then 10 cents per minute thereafter. So the intent is for a couple of dollars, you're able to get from your origin to a destination, maybe for a lunch, or you're able to get to Civic Center and take advantage of this as a route choice, a mode choice. There are other payment plans available in terms of monthly and annual memberships. The scooters also have the same sort of approach, you can get a pass to encompass both modes. And there is an equity pricing program built into the contract for lower-income persons. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to Katie now to talk more, a little bit about their program and how they operate.
Thank you so much for having me tonight. Apologies for the bike beeping intermittently. It turns into an alarm clock every once in a while just to embarrass me in appropriate situations. So our operations plan, we will be, of course, hiring local staff to oversee the bike fleet here. On this side, you'll see that, of course, we will be looking through all of the data that's being collected throughout the program to determine, you know, how it's functioning and determine also if an expansion is needed. There will be an opportunity, as CJ mentioned, for the city to up that fleet if desired. And I'll be happy to answer any, you know, detailed questions after this.
Just real briefly, want to mention that you may have seen in the paper recently, and we mentioned briefly in the staff report, there are a number of other vendors in the region. Jump Bike currently operates a program in Sacramento, West Sacramento, and parts of Davis. We're seeing their system expand, particularly in Sacramento. We're also now aware, as of late last week or just early this week, there are three vendors that are looking at expanding on a scooter-only program in Sacramento. Staff's been approached by one of those vendors to potentially include Elk Grove in their deployment. At this time, staff has said, we're not interested, we'd like to focus on the pilot program, but certainly will take any additional direction the council has. So with that, options before the council, if you so choose, you certainly could cancel the pilot if you'd like. I'm sure SECOG would gladly redistribute those grant funds to the other jurisdictions. On the other side, we could certainly look at providing some local funding towards additional devices or hubs. We wouldn't be, as a staff perspective, recommending that at this point, we want to see how the first 50 go and what locations we end up looking at for the hub deployment. You could certainly allow other providers in the city at this point. We haven't heard any direct that they're going to show up no matter what we do. So far, it's been friendly conversations and requests from staff just to hold off. So staff's recommendations to continue the pilot, see where this takes us, and we'll come back with updates and recommendations if there are any. End of our presentation this evening, available to answer questions.
Any kind of questions? Excuse me. Councilmember Detrick.
So what, how is the liability with this?
The liability is all covered under the SECOG grant, SECOG contract with Gotcha. So Gotcha is responsible for the liability as the operator of the program.
So the city has no liability in this?
No, that's correct.
I'll go with what she says.
Well, you get paid the big bucks to give me that answer, though.
That's what we call an admission over there.
Okay, that's my main concern, that, you know, what would there be liability-wise? If we have no liability, then I support the program.
Can I go first? Because I only have one question. I know you've got like 10 questions. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. So I've actually used a jump bike in Sacramento. How does, I know it's a docking station, I love that, because I think it's not going to be like Sacramento where it's scattered everywhere. But what's to say that I don't get on one of this and I don't make it to the docking station and I stop, I don't know, at a place where it isn't dock and I just, a docking station, I just leave it there, right? Is my card charged? Or what's to stop people or prevent people from not just stopping it at where they're at and not taking it to a docking station?
So I'll let Katie answer that.
Okay, yes.
Sure. So we use fees, just like you touched on, to encourage people to end their rides in those designated hub locations. And then in addition, you know, our local staff will include a team of rebalancers who will be moving around town to reposition those bikes as needed. We believe in a hub-based approach because it is the more organized, you know, way that these devices can live in a city without impeding pedestrians or vehicular traffic or, you know, ADA zones as well.
Okay, the chair recognizes the District One representative. Clerk, could please start the timer?
I'm going to start with a question, then a comment. So I'm glad Councilmember Winn asked a question, she did, so I had that same one. And then in terms of this five, under a five-year contract, so as you start to see how people are moving, is it easy for you to pick up those hubs and move them around town?
That's a great question, yeah. So they actually do not bolt into the concrete. Our equipment sort of clicks together like Legos, for lack of a better comparison. So we can actually move those when needed. And I will mention, too, the combined weight of those stations makes it impossible to move, so you don't have to worry about that.
Okay, great, no, fantastic to hear. Well, I will keep it short, and like several hints from my friends over here. I mean, this is, I'm excited because you're not just at the possibilities, but it is a test, it's a test pilot, but it shows that we're being innovative as a city. And I think if, from a bike safety perspective, you know, we've heard people that talk about bike safety, something like this, you've got more bicyclists on the road inherently, you'll have, to me, you'll create a safer bike culture. So I think this all lends itself towards that. And so I'm, you know, I'm just really excited to see this starting to come to fruition. So thank you, and thank you for agreeing to come into suburban area, Gotcha.
Of course, yeah, we're excited, we're very happy to be here.
Great. I, thank you for keeping it short, councilmember. Appreciate that. I just have one concern with this, and that is that I think our pilot hub is too small. I don't see a lot of folks necessarily going to a hub to unlock the bike, riding the bike for what would be a maximum of two miles if they lived and were going to at the edges of the radius. So I'd like to see us expand it. Is that going to create too much of a problem and immediately, you know?
Hallelujah.
Huh?
Hallelujah.
Well, yeah, and so I would look to include Old Town Plaza in that, because I, you know, I think that would be a destination when something's going on down there, or at least to, or, you know, get people down there to park the bikes and then you go into Old Town.
So we have thought about that. Old Town's been on our radar, and I think it would be a logical expansion area. The immediate concern is in terms of the focus areas we've started out with, the sort of the seed area for this, that as you get out, we obviously can get across the freeway easily with the pet overcrossing that's just up the street here, and that allows you to get down and over to basically Elk Grove Boulevard. How the user then experiences Elk Grove Boulevard from there to at least the edge of Old Town, if not all the way to the plaza, I think there's some refinement we need to be looking at in the built environment to make that a safer alternative or a safer pathway for folks. Some of that could tie in with the Old Town SPA update that'll be starting here in the next couple of days. Some of it is just broader in terms of our bike pedestrian facilities overall. So I think we want to look at that a little bit more before going that far out, but we can certainly look at what options are available to do that. If we do go to, excuse me, if we do go that route, given how large the service area becomes, to make sure that there are units and hubs available at good locations, we would probably be needing to expand the system on day one beyond the 50 units, beyond the eight to 10 hubs. So there would need to be some sort of city financial commitment to do that. So perhaps what we could do is look at it a little bit, maybe bring back some alternatives for you to look at, if that's what you'd like to do.
So if I, you know, if we So, so if I, you know, if we go with the existing hub on day one, it's not a five-year pilot commitment before we can expand it?
No, at any time, we can add in the additional equipment.
Okay.
Vice Mayor, so if I can add to that, Christopher, you and I had the similar conversations about this. And part of the talks we had was, this is the one area, but that doing it on the east side of town and west side of town, not expecting someone to ride from I-5 all the way to Waterman, but if we have these pockets, so that Stone Lake Shopping Center, for instance, I would encourage on the west side, a lot, a lot of things to ride to down there, as well as what the Vice Mayor mentioned. And so definitely, if it, if we find out sooner than later, we'd love to talk about expansion. Secondly, to the point about the flexibility, so knowing that people don't have to use the hub, it's more of a convenient thing. I think that's important for folks to know because it's, especially in the suburban community, if I have to take it to a hub, but then backtrack three blocks, I probably won't, won't do it right. So understanding that flexibility would be good. And so I'm, I really want to encourage a robust rollout and education for folks to, so I don't, maybe, maybe you could speak to that a little bit. I'm not sure what your plan is for rollout.
Yeah, absolutely. So we have a marketing team that we'll be leveraging on a local level to ensure that we are educating the public about the bike share program and how to use it. And we'll be working closely with the city partners, assuming all goes well tonight, to, you know, make sure that we're doing that in the right way. I also want to mention too, these bikes have a hold feature, which allows users to actually pause the reservation and keep that bike under their name. So if they did want to make a trip, maybe there's not a hub at the location they want to make a stop at, or it's outside of what we define as a system area, they will be able to do that.
Oh, that's good to know. Could you just provide an example? Are you going to be at festivals or what do you?
Local events, farmer's markets, anything we can do, you know, to keep a pulse in this community. Would love to tie into, you know, anything going on here, especially, you know, reaching out with local businesses and creating partnerships with them as well.
Fantastic. Thank you.
One other question. Yeah, Councilmember Detrick.
About helmets?
Helmets, helmets would be required. I believe as part of the rollout, there's usually a few handed out.
Yes, so we would be distributing free helmets. And in addition, partnering with local bike shops to offer them at a discounted rate to those that participate in the program. It's a tough subject right now because it's sort of like bowling shoes. There's not really a sanitary way to share helmets. But whoever, you know, does solve that issue will make a lot of money off of it. But in the meantime, we are, you know, getting as many helmets in as many hands as we can.
Are you going to have helmets available at the locations where they pick up the bikes?
There will not be helmets available there.
Because I, I mean, I see it problematic if, I mean, if people live here already and have a bike and have a helmet, they're going to probably ride their own bike. But if they're coming to town and don't know this is here, odds are they're, you know, that would be kind of a restriction for somebody to go out and buy a helmet when they got a helmet at home, or especially at a hotel, or they just came into town to visit.
I think maybe something we'll look at, the, sort of the hygiene issue needs to be addressed. But I think we can look at when we partner with the hotels, as opportunities for the hubs, are there, is there something we can do there to help fill that gap?
Okay. If there's no further questions, I'll go ahead and open the public comment opportunity. I have nobody signed up. I noticed that McKenzie has left. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one coming forward, I'll go ahead and close the public comment opportunity. I believe we've provided direction onto item 10.4. Excuse me, 10.3.
10.3 would be to receive information, provide direction regarding options for a Christmas tree at the Civic Center.
Good evening, councilmembers.
Good evening.
I am Lana Yoshimura, Community Event Center Manager. I am going to share this presentation with Kristen Lawrence. I'm going to handle the initial part, and she will take the secondary part. On May 22nd, staff presented initial concepts for a Christmas tree celebration at the Civic Center this year. We're looking towards a regional event. Council instructed us at that time to go back and consider two items. One, the way to promote inclusiveness in December holidays, and secondly, to evaluate a living tree versus a cut tree. We met with the city's diversity and inclusion team for input, which I am a part of. And some of the options that we came up with was to use lighting elements to display holiday greetings and imagery, banners with holiday greetings, to connect with cultural groups to create educational holiday vignettes and exhibits, as well as work with the multicultural community to reach out to local groups. So I wanted to provide you with some images which kind of display that. So in terms of festing lighting options, what you're seeing on these buildings are, are used with gobos and some uplighting. So basically, we could create different types of festive lighting options using these. And I've included several gobos that are out on the market that we could utilize, happy holidays, and in different languages. So basically, we can create a multilingual, as well as a multi, a diverse, inclusive environment that way. Secondly, we have a banner program in the commons, similar to our street banner program. So these are some of the banners that will go up as branding for part of the Civic Center. What we can do as part of the event is change them out to holiday greetings, maybe in multiple languages, celebrating different things, so maybe Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Hanukkah, so making sure that we're being inclusive in that way as well. The last portion is cultural displays. This is a display from a jurisdiction I used to work for. Basically, what they do is they allow different cultural groups or religious organizations to adopt a tree as part of their holiday celebration. That Christmas tree, or tree in general, is used as a medium for people to decorate, how they celebrate the holidays as part of their religion or their culture. It also allows for some education because a plaque is put onto it, and so it explains the rationale for some of the things, the elements that are on the tree. So we would think that this would be a very good opportunity to work with some of our cultural groups in the community, display it maybe in the lobby of the community center throughout the month of December. It adds a festive, as well as educational and informative piece for the community. So these are the ways that we looked at including some inclusiveness in a holiday celebration. I'm going to turn this over to Kristen, and she's going to talk about trees.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. You had asked for us to look into the concept of having a living tree be part of the celebration and presence at the Civic Center. We've been working with the Public Works Department. They've consulted with landscape architects, arborists, and we have Alvin Wong, our in-house architect, available if you have technical questions this evening at the back of the room. They talked at first at trying to find locations that were possible options to plant a living tree. And there were three that came, kind of rose to the top as options. So the first location that was recommended as the preferred option by this group was closest to the preconstructed base that we already have out at the site. It's close to the Big Timber entrance. The additional alternative locations that were proposed are closer to the fountain area on either side of what we affectionately refer to as the porch now, so it's the raised platform. All of these have some pros and cons with them. As I mentioned, the recommended option is closest to where we were already proposing to place a tree. It is visible from the Civic Center and future Big Timber expansion to Elk Grove Boulevard. And it is closest to some electrical that was already installed for this purpose. It is a little bit further away from the pedestrian flows, as they refer to it on here, as we're creating an event experience, but it's still a good location. The other locations are within the pedestrian flows, but they have a bit of, you know, a problem with electrical access. This is kind of a rendering of possible what it could look like. This site is, it would be the only conifer within the property, so that makes it a little bit unique. It will be blending in with several oak trees and other tree specimens. But that gives you a sense of what it would look like in the recommended location. And this is the one that's to the east of the porch within the promenade. And this one is closest to the west side of the property along the commons. There are really no species, there are 16 different species in the National Christmas Tree Association's recommended list for Christmas trees. And none of those on that list will grow very well in Elk Grove. So there were a couple of species that this group had recommended that tend to do well in the Elk Grove climate. Their preferred or recommended was the Coast Redwood or the Deodar Cedar. Both of those are visible along Laguna Palms Way. And so as you can see on the left-hand side, that's what you might expect from a Coast Redwood. And on the right is a Deodar Cedar. So these box trees, they really are starting very small. It's a 72 or 84-inch box, but it's a much smaller tree than what the cut tree was proposed at. But that gives you a sense for what we could expect for an initial planting. And then their height in 10 years, if you look at the Coast Redwoods, it could get up to 40 feet. In 50 years, it could be 75 to 100. And the Deodar Cedar, 10 years, you're getting about 35 feet, and in 50 years, 50 to 75 feet. So it really depends on the look that you would want to have for the Christmas tree. There are some costs built into each of these options. The recommended option along Big Timber tends to be the most affordable option, if you will, because it did have some of that electrical access already built in. But our most expensive option is Option C along Fountain Plaza. This is just a reference to the original display that was being proposed by Stage Nine Exhibits, that there was a platform involved. And we would expect something similar would be built to support a living tree display if we're looking to include both lighting and sound. This is just some additional information that's too small to read about electrical access. But if you have questions about that, Alvin can certainly assist us with that. As I'd mentioned, the last time we were here, we talked to you about a proposal that we had been, had received from Stage Nine Exhibitions. It was similar to what Old SAC has for their Theater of Lights. And the cost ranges are associated with a startup low-end option, if you will, that has custom ornaments and lighting without music. And the higher end, the 109,000, is a Theater of Lights-style experience that would be programmed to play each day of the display at varying times. So to do another decoration option, we would be looking at probably a different contractor and alternate ways of purchasing those materials. Wanted to present you with some possible options, or certainly you could consider any variation on these. But as we're looking to move forward with some sort of an event this year, we're hoping that you'll consider either an option that purchases holiday decorations for the facility, similar to what Lana has already shared with you, that does not include a tree, or purchase a cut tree for installation in the base that's already constructed, that has some electrical access already. You could still purchase an artificial tree for installation in the existing base, similar to the ribbon tree that's in that bottom right-hand corner that we talked about before, that's a bit more modern take on a Christmas tree, if you will. Or you could certainly purchase and install a living tree at the recommended location or one of the alternate locations that were identified in the tree study and provide staff with direction on whether you would want to execute one of the Stage Nine options. Although with a much smaller tree, I don't know how workable that will be. Or you could delay the introduction of a holiday experience or take no additional action. The costs on these are, they vary. Option four is a little bit skewed because, as I said, that it's a much smaller tree, so we're probably not looking at that cost. And we would have to go back to them to see if, what the threshold was even to entertain an option from them. It could be scaled down, but this is, for the purposes of this proposal, incorporating the costs that were built into the tree study as well as the decoration option. So these, we originally have budgeted $125,000 into the events budget this year to accommodate this project. And Option four certainly exceeds that. So tonight, we're looking for some direction from you on whether to proceed with or without a tree. If we move forward with a tree, if one of those options would be something you would want to consider, and whether you'd want to move forward with a living tree, or a cut tree, or an artificial tree. And your preferred decorating plan on that, whether we go with a Stage Nine option or we consider an alternative, which we've talked about at the last meeting. And then any additional input you might have on our ideas for recognizing other December holidays. Available to take your questions.
Okay, any questions of Kristen or Lana? No? Okay, thank you. Go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity, and I have Mr. Becker signed up to speak. Randy's is the only slip that I have.
Vice Mayor, council. I guess since I commented last time I'd come up, prolong the meeting. Once again, I like a living tree. Part of the living tree was not necessarily to encompass the holiday starting up, but something to look towards the future, and something that families could look towards the future as the tree grew. If you're looking at five years, 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, and et cetera. I did like the fact of, of having the indoor holiday encompassing of different ethnic groups to see, to have them decorate, because that brings community, that brings their community together overall. However, I think for us to be invested in that is whether or not the community is wanting to be invested in it. Meaning, we can't force people to do something, and there's no sense spending money on something if we don't know that's what they want to do. So I think that part probably needs to be looked in further through maybe the multicultural committee as far as the conversation. And I do like the light show to start out with. I think that makes it nice. But I think the living tree was something for down the road, planning it now. So it could be encompassed as part of an overall holiday part, especially if the light parade's going to be now down around that area. So that was kind of what my thought was. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and go to council deliberation and direction. Councilmember Sue.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. You know, since we talked about this item, we had the opening of the Aquatic Center. And going into that event and looking, looking around and seeing what's coming in terms of the community center, I'm even more convinced that we, our city, our residents, is worthy for something a little bit more grander. And so I do, I would advocate that we definitely do the, the light show. It gives us an opportunity to have input, so we could use that to communicate the history of Elk Grove and other things that are meaningful to our city. Something that was talked about before was the potential to conflict with the Dickens Fair. We could arrange it so that we are not on that, in that same timeframe. And I would also advocate for, you know, Mr. Becker brought up a good point, for the multicultural committee being charged with seeing, gauging the interest of decorating other trees. And maybe it's not even trees, maybe it's, maybe it's just something different to, to educate the residents of Elk Grove on other cultures and other celebrations. And then the final thing, whether, you know, a living tree, I can appreciate Mr. Becker's comments about having something for the ages. However, I also think about the risk in that. In other words, I've got, I've had some trees where ten years later, it's stricken by disease and you have to rip the whole thing out. And so, you know, we could go down this, and then, of course, you're not, you know, it's not, it's not full grown yet, so you're having to wait. So I guess what I'm saying is, I think, rather than go down that path, I'd be in favor of a, of a cut tree. And one that we can, we can plan for definitively and use and have the community enjoy, and then we'll recycle, of course. But, so I would advocate for that. Cut tree, doing the light program, where we can provide input into the theme. And then the nod to the other cultures and celebrations and not conflict with the Dickens Fair.
Are you looking at Option One?
No, it's Option Two with the, Option Two and then the, the light, the lighting and music.
Isn't that Option One with the programming and all that?
No, Option One is just the holiday decorations, no tree.
Okay, it says forty-foot live tree. I'm not looking in the attachment.
Option, Option Two would be your cut tree with a Stage Nine Incorporated proposal as was originally presented in May twenty-second.
You're looking at the old staff report. Go to page six.
Okay.
Those are the current options. Councilmember Winn?
Thank you, sir. See, you know, I took a look at this, and the way I looked at it was, we had, it's either, what was more important to you, is it the location of the tree or the fact that we had a living tree? And so staff had a really, you know, it was really easy for me to see where I liked it, the recommendation of where the tree would be, but we couldn't have a living tree in that area where the recommended spot is. And so for me, what was more important was the location. And the other two location, had we wanted a living tree, it would be in an area that I think would, would be an area where people can see and where we can gather, it would make it look so nice. And so I, you know, I'm in favor of having, I actually am in favor of having an artificial tree because I feel like we can recycle that and it would save us money. But I'm okay with also having a cut tree. But I'm in favor of having it at the staff recommended location.
I like the living tree as well, too, Mr. Becker. I just think that, as Councilmember Soon mentioned earlier, trees grow differently, and looking at the trees that were recommended, the Deodar Cedar, I, you know, that tree just doesn't look like a Christmas tree to me. And so the Coast Redwood is one that if we were looking at a living tree, I would, I would be in favor of. But it looks like a really, it looks small to me. I mean, maybe on the picture, it looks small, but it might be a little bit bigger. You know, if it's going to be our very first tree that we're going to light up and showcase, I'd like it to be a nice big tree. So I'm in favor of Option Two or Three.
Councilmember Detrick?
Yeah, Option Two's fine. So I agree with what Councilmember Winn said, and so I have kind of a hybrid proposal. And it kind of speaks to what Randy was talking about of looking forward to the future. I would be in favor of Option Three and planting a living tree in the recommended location by Big Timber Entrance, with the idea that by the time that artificial tree wears out and has passed its useful shelf life, then by that point, the living tree should be of significant size to be a good tree.
I like that.
Two different spots you're saying?
No, they'd be right next door. So you'd have, you'd have the artificial tree that would be on the existing base that has always been planned for it. And then right next to it would be a tree that we could watch grow every year and look forward to the day that we light that tree instead.
If there's enough room there.
I don't, I don't think they're conflicting at all, are they? Because one would be over closer to the Veterans Grove, and the other is on a pedestal within the walkway.
I don't think we'd have enough budget, though, to do both in this year. Because the artificial tree was a hundred thousand dollars, and the live tree was, what, seventy thousand dollars? Kristin?
Not, not just to plant it, I didn't think. That included decorations, Stage Nine, the whole. To plant it was like fifteen thousand to put it in the ground and seven thousand for the tree, something like that.
Did they get to install irrigation on that?
I know we need to bring over electrical, and I don't know what the cost is. Do you guys know the cost of the, of the live tree in the recommended spot?
And the electrical could be put off to a future year, given that it's not going to be utilized right away.
Sure, that live tree wouldn't match any of the other plantings at the Civic Center site?
You know, one of the things we talked about last time is doing one feature there, and then maybe the Old Town Plaza doing a more traditional.
Well, then you're into additional cost again.
Well, we're looking at additional cost either way if you do two at one location. So if we do, we could do the artificial and be more grander at the Civic Center, and then something a little bit more traditional in the Old Town. Just a thought.
Councilman Detrick, would you put it, would you put it in, sorry, Councilmember Winn, would you put it, would you, would you grow it somewhere specifically in Old Town?
At the, at the Old Town Plaza?
Or like, so be a cut tree at the Old Town Plaza? Is that what I, is it?
What's that?
Is it a cut tree for, over in the Old Town Plaza? Or is it a live tree planted there?
That would be our, watch it grow and...
Yeah, I could, I could deal with that. I definitely, yeah, I mean, I'm, I've always been a live tree guy anyway, so...
Because one of the issues has been that there's not really a good tree in Old Town to get decorated.
Yeah.
And so this would hopefully in time solve that issue.
So then we would have two trees, one at the, for future. As that living tree grows and is ready to be a big Christmas tree, we would decorate two trees and have two celebrations?
Yes.
Well, they have the, yeah, the Dickens Fair, right? So I got questioned just because I'm not an artificial tree person. Does it look really good? The artificial trees look pretty good at that size?
So for me, I wouldn't be trying to mimic the living tree. I'd want to go with that, like, more modern ribbon-looking one.
Oh, okay. I see. Is that what you were thinking, too, Councilmember Winn?
Sure, I just think, just to clarify, the living tree planting without any contingency or electrical installation, we're looking at about thirty thousand dollars.
So the startup cost of ninety-eight thousand for the artificial, plus the thirty thousand for the living, would be just over what's budgeted for this year, is that right?
Do it next year.
Yeah, and we'd have to, if you wanted to do it in the Old Town Plaza area, we'd have to look for a location and then figure out what those costs, which we could do later.
Do it for, we could do it for next year.
I would only say we're trying not to compete with the Old Town Foundation, and that group does have a plan that they're looking to implement this year for the tree that's out there, and they're working with the property owner. So I know that we were trying not to compete with them on this and introducing a tree at the plaza. Either, I think we would need to talk with them about it, see if they're amenable to some sort of partnership or, or, you know, have a discussion at the very least, just to make sure that there's not any problems with that plan.
Well, yeah, if they, if they, I don't want to compete with it. If they've got something planned. I thought that there was a lot of complaints about that particular tree. But if there's a better plan, either way, we could put it off a year, watch what they do this year, and maybe not even do that and just focus on Civic Center.
Okay, so for the purposes of tonight's discussion, to keep things moving, let's set aside the living tree, whether it's planted at Civic Center or Old Town. So which do we want to go with, Option Two or Option Three? You want a cut tree or you want to invest in an artificial tree? I heard cut tree from you.
Yeah, but...
I think I heard artificial from you.
We were going to go with, I would do artificial if we were going to plant the living tree and then watch that grow. But if we're going to do a cut tree this year, hopefully we can plant one next year. Because we'll have, had some startup costs already that we won't have to use next year, right? So we can do a cut tree this year, and then next year, we can plant the tree that we're going to watch grow.
Well, but then next year, you'd have an expense of a cut tree or an artificial tree again.
We'd have to do another cut tree, right?
Yeah, I mean, that's my, my personal thing, and I heard, you know, you guys, some of yours is artificial. Do, I just asked you, do you, do you think, you know, with this size tree, they'll truck it in, and there's usually some excitement around that. Do you guys think that would be, you know, something we would want in the community? It's just, I'm trying to just envision the whole process here, you know, when that, the time of year comes and you see that, you know, you see the tree coming down the street and all that.
I thought the excitement was the lighting of the tree.
All of it, to me. I mean, I love, I'm just, I love Christmas, I love the celebration of Christmas, so... But I, I'm, you know. Cut tree's just what I'm used to, if you guys...
I can go either way.
Okay, well, we need you to go one way or the other.
There's three.
No, there's one and two. We think we're both artificial with living, and I think Darren's cut, with or without living.
I think if we do the artificial, it's a one-time investment for the next, what, five years? Eight years? How long do they project? Six to eight years. Okay, we're going to make you do eight. I'm okay with the artificial. They're, I mean, they make some beautiful artificial trees.
They do. I was just looking at these pictures when Councilman, I mean, Vice Mayor Hume was just reminding me, so that's fine.
Honestly, they make them so good, you really have to get and look and feel and...
Yeah, well, this looks nothing like a tree, actually, but it looks really nice.
Realistic look, or you want this more modern ribbon-looking?
The ribbon, the ribbon's an interesting one, too. I'm not opposed to that.
You know what? They both look nice. We're going to have a great event either way.
Artificial.
That's fine, artificial.
Artificial, hopefully living.
Do they need regular or ribbon? Which one are we going?
I prefer the ribbon because I think it's a little more inclusive. It doesn't, you know, it's more of a celebration of lights necessarily than any particular religious denomination.
I agree. I like the ribbon one, too. It's very modern, it's different.
Go ribbon, be done.
Well, one more question. So envision the kids out there, your daughters, do they, I mean, do you think it makes a difference?
They care about the lights.
The spirit, they care more about the lights.
And whatever goodies you buy them.
Well, that's for sure, too. That's true.
Chocolate.
Yeah. Okay, fine, ribbon.
Decision made.
You need, do they need the other for the indoor one with the multicultural?
I think we're all in agreement that we like that as well. Somehow engage in the Multicultural Commission to bring some sort of display onboard. Great, thank you. Okay, Item Ten-Four.
Item Ten-Four will be discussion and direction on outdoor event centers and residential zoning districts.
Thank you and good evening again. Matt D., Senior Planner, City of Elk Grove. This item is discussion and direction on the outdoor event centers. The purpose of discussion tonight is to discuss previous directions from City Council on issues raised by residents and the Planning Commission, a brief overview of our current standards and practices. And then tonight's direction is kind of split into two different categories. The first being land use direction on options for the event center, and the second being direction on citywide noise standards, how they relate to amplified sound. Now, I know these two are somewhat related because a lot of the concerns raised about outdoor event centers concern noise impacts. Based on the scope of work for those options and to look into those different directions, staff has separated into two different categories for tonight's direction. Now, a little bit of the background. Recent projects have led to concerns raised by residents and the Planning Commission. These requests have included possible revisions to the city's noise standards related to outdoor amplified sound. This item was briefly mentioned at the March City Council meeting. However, changes were not included with that update as a study specific to those requests were not undertaken at that time. Now, before I get to the direction, I do want to outline outdoor event centers. They are defined as outdoor facilities for public assembly and group entertainment other than sporting events. These include facilities of weddings, live theater, and concerts similar to entertainment. These are generally categorized as for-profit centers that lease space to a second party. While these are allowed in various zones with an issuance of condition use permit, tonight we are focusing on the agricultural residential zoning districts, AR one, two, five, and ten, as well as the low-density residential districts, the RD one, two, and three. These uses are prohibited in every other zone that does not allow them with a condition use permit. Now, while outdoor amplified sound is not defined as a component of these uses, we do relatively see requests on noise for these types of uses. Now, a brief overview of the noise standards. As the council's aware, the general plan outlines the noise standards for the city while the municipal code Noise Control, Chapter 6.32, defines and enforces those standards. The table in front of you is Table 8.4, which outlines daytime and nighttime ambient levels. One thing for consideration on a case-by-case basis is that footnote D, the city may impose noise level standards which are more or less restrictive based on determination of existing ambient levels. As the city has a few rail lines and various different street systems, a lot of areas in the city actually have a higher ambient level than the table before you. Now, again, the main issues raised, outdoor event centers in and near residential zones or sensitive receptors as defined by municipal code. The potential for these centers to generate excessive noise that could impact surrounding uses. And again, staff is seeking direction on land use as well as the noise study citywide. Now, the land use Option One, as shown in the staff report, is no action. This option would not amend current standards or processes. Outdoor event centers would continue to be processed with discretionary condition use permit approved by or denied by the Planning Commission. Future submissions will be reviewed on a case-by-case basis for their compliance with our standards as well as any potential impacts that might present. Land use Option Two. Now, this would prohibit outdoor event centers in residential zones, in pretty much all residential zones. This would require a text amendment to our code for the agricultural residential and the very low-density residential. While I do not have a number in terms of any existing or legal or illegal facilities that are currently operating within those residential zones, should the council choose this option, staff would probably have a brief analysis of any potential impacts from that amendment that would result in any kind of legal non-conforming use. And again, non-conforming uses would be limited in their ability to modify or expand. Land use Option Three would continue to allow these with an issuance or approval of a condition use permit, but would not allow amplified sound to be included with those applications. Some non-amplified instruments could be presented with some of those outdoor event centers, but it would probably necessitate a noise study on a case-by-case basis for those requests. And now, the second portion of the direction was for amplified sound citywide. Based on some of the issues raised, excessive noise generated from potential outdoor event centers. One of the things we've noticed in some of our discretionary reviews is the difference between compliance with those noise standards versus the subjective nature of excessive noise. Because something's audible does not necessarily mean it's a violation of standards. Specific standards for areas versus citywide noise standards. Currently, our standards are geared towards citywide. Some requests were made to maybe save a focal analysis for certain areas versus others. One thing staff does want to caution with any review of noise is that there is no guarantee that our current standards will be amended. There is a work effort proposed with this option. As illustrated in the staff report in the slide before you. Should council choose this direction, staff would return with a brief scope or overview of the work effort per council's request. That could include an investigation into ambient noise levels, definition of sensitive... into ambient noise levels, definition of sensitive receptors in the city, operational standards, physical methods of attenuation, and then any further analysis for the city to determine what areas might be in need of an amendment. Now, I do have to mention this because it is impacted by our scope or work of effort for these directions. As you can see in the land use direction, should you choose option one, there is no impact as there will be no change. Option two and three could be included into the special project budget for the amendments, while the citywide noise direction would really depend on the council's direction for the scope moving forward. And we would probably have subsequent follow-up meetings with that. Now, a summary, tonight will not result in any action, but direction from the council. Consider the adopt, staff is here to consider additional options presented by the council. And again, this would, any action require follow-up by staff. Having said that, that concludes my presentation. As the options presented are before you, staff is here to answer any questions you might have.
Before we begin, can I get a motion for the ten o'clock rule?
So moved.
All right, a motion and second rule. Is the favor saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We will continue. Any questions for Matt?
Yeah, actually.
Councilmember Sue.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Hi, Matt. And maybe I'll, you might defer to Darren because he and I are the ones who have had the conversation, but could you just review a conversation that talked to you about outdoor ambient noise? Cause in my, I'm over in my district and there's strikes. We've heard complaints before about the, the noise coming from there. And so we're, we're talking about outdoor versus indoor ambient noise.
Yes, Councilmember Sue. And the case in strikes, that was indoors and there's on occasion doors open and that sound escapes those areas and can lead to intermittent spikes in the ambient, not the ambient, the, the decibel level outside. However, there's other cases where we've, you know, we've looked at and I believe there was another indoor case that we had a possibly some, something in Old Town where occasionally if the indoor band's playing, door opens, you know, maybe exposed to just intermittent spikes in sound. But those, those aren't subject unless their doors are left open for long periods of time would, would we enforce that, so.
Right, thank you.
All right, seeing no other questions, go to open the public comment opportunity. I have some folks signed up to speak here. Carrie Seymour, following Carrie will be Katie Earl.
Hi, I'm Carrie Seymour, beleaguered citizen. And I think some of you know me. I really prefer not to come down here, but this is a really grave matter. We are in trouble in Elk Grove. We have a proliferation of these event centers that are snuggled up next to homes. The noise is not just generated by amplified music or drunk guests on microphones, although that's a lot of it. It's the fact that we have multiple centers going in. These are high-revenue, very lucrative, and, and all under the radar. They're, they're resorting to stealth tactics. And you could have one next to you if we don't do something to legislate against this. This is a huge problem. Because when you have multiple, we have, I, I think I've counted five in our neighborhood and one is right on our block. When you have that many places making that, that level of noise with, they have 300 guests and cars coming down a one-lane road. That isn't just generating mu, uh, music, loud, loud sounds from bad bands that go on endless hours with absolutely no restriction, by the way, unlike something like a commercial venue, which is limited, for example Sheldon Inn. And I think I would like to thank Rosa Tapia and Anna Olson at this point. Officer Olson has been really helpful in helping us figure out what to do. And, and Rosa Tapia has been extremely patient with us, listening to our travails. But we really have a problem and I would ask that, I, I suppose you've read my email, which I think pretty much nails it. But it really, it really is more than it.
Bless you.
Than just having a music. I don't think it has anything to do with a bar or a nightclub opening a door or the sound levels. And I have no problem with loud music. It's just that I shouldn't have to listen to that all day long Saturday, all day long Sunday, Saturday night, Friday night. The cheap people have to go on Monday night because they can't afford a hundred thousand dollars for a venue. You know, this is real money that's being generated and I seriously doubt Elk Grove is getting anything tax-wise out of it, which isn't how it works with commercial businesses. And the real problem here is that we have the invasion of commercial into residential and it's, it's unabated. There's, there's no repercussions. We need to do something because it's proliferating. It, it makes your neighborhood unlivable. And if you buy a house, and housing is dear these days, if you buy a house in a, in a town or in the country, you have that expectation that that is your, your escape, your respite, right? And if, if it isn't and you can't have peace and quiet in your own home or use your, your yard or your garden, I mean, there's a problem. And it, and it's not just in the rural area. They're, they're popping up. There's inadequate parking. We've.
Okay, Carrie, I think you've made your point. Thank you. Nice to see you. It's been a while.
I like to elucidate.
I know, but you could do that within three minutes that you were.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, please, I, I support option two. I would really ask you to ask the planning commission to investigate and expand on option two. Thank you.
Thank you, and.
One never moves in next door to you because.
Next up is Katie Earl. Following Katie Earl is Bill Myers.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Katie Earl. I, I'm a neighbor of Carrie.
Well, that's good, cause that's who I just called.
That's me. I see we have about four neighbors here from our street. We live in a residential rural neighborhood with agriculture. I'll make it quick. I support the option number two. I shot you an email as well. Prohibit all residential zoning districts. We feel as though it really disrupts the peace, ambient neighborhood that we live in, in the settings. We don't feel as though, as though there's any place for commercial businesses in residence, specifically next door. Whether you have a, a neighbor who decides to have a, no kidding, 100 to 300 people at a wedding, it's pretty disturbing. We have speed issues on our one-lane road, and I'm sure this is across the, the, the city. So we'll just speak for all, not just my own specific. Public safety issues, car speed, alcohol being served and at these people's, people's homes and events. These are not official licensed businesses. Noise, traffic, alcohol, litter, and the stress of it in the neighborhood. I think that's all I have to say. I'll keep it brief. But thank you for, for your time. I also want to thank also Rosa and Anna. They've been really helpful.
Katie, are these, Katie, are these.
I'm sorry.
Are these personal use or are they actually?
They're business, it's a business.
Commercial endeavors.
Yeah, they're commercial endeavors.
They're non-permitted.
Exactly.
Non-permitted, commercial endeavors, yes.
Yes.
That's a whole separate issue in itself, right?
Yeah. It, you have to almost be specific. Cause there are venues with indoor venues that you drive by and you see them, or you pay to go do it. You have the SAS Hall where we've had many fundraisers for school, high school and whatnot, lacrosse, soccer, et cetera. And then there's people in your neighborhood who have multiple big events, beautiful, but they're not licensed and not permitted and they're not zoned. Very fearful for neighbors. Again, like we're specifically on a one-lane road. What if someone has an emergency? Firefighters can't get in. Police can't get in. Children can't get in and out. Elderly people can't get out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Bill Myers, and following Mr. Myers is Mr. Murphy.
Thank you. What did we learn from several months ago when we went through this with Sheldon? Okay, first of all, the sound issue is a tool that doesn't work. That is, you can, you can put it out there, you can apply it, you can measure it, looks like it ought to be good, doesn't have an effect. We had it, we measured that when we went there after, after the decision. People are disturbed by the sound. The fact that a certain decibel has no effect on it, even at the lowest level we can record on the sound system, you could hear, you could hear as much as quarter mile away. Sound that doesn't belong there is egregious. Now, even if traffic sounds is equally thing. So that whole thing doesn't work. Now, land issue. The reason, what it did is because the, the city, you know, quite, quite understandably, let commercial, the commercial businesses on a property, commercial property, you know, have this sound. The problem is it goes across the wall to an area that is not that. So, well, the, the business happened somewhere, the effect is elsewhere. I would suggest that's gonna be anywhere. There's nothing special about the rural area that way. If you look around our city, I wonder if there's any place where you can allow this kind of sound outside and not really, you know, hit somebody that, that lives in, in, in the area. So I'm, I'm kind of wondering why in the city do we permit any outdoor commercial events, you know, using amplified sound, period. Okay, in our area, we have to move on it in, in Sheldon, because we already knew of a couple. We've heard about others they're setting up. There it is, people who use their property for commercial purposes as an event, a wedding or a party, something like that, but for, for money. Difference between those who want to have a party, invite their friends, happens once or twice a year, and those who put it out and make money off of it. I don't know how you put that in the, in the, the language, but that's where the problem is. I agree with Carrie. I don't, you know, this is gonna go big and we need to stop it. Thank you very much, folks.
Thanks, Bill. Okay, next up is George Murphy. Following George Murphy is Randy Becker, and Randy, this is the last slip I have.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. Yeah, there are two questions tonight you gotta, you gotta answer and discuss. One of them is the land use issue. And the other, of course, is, is our, our city noise standards generated by amplified sound. As you've heard, these two overlap. You get one, you get the other. The land use question of allowing outdoor event centers in certain residential zones pertains only to those zones as identified in the staff report, about five or six zones. The noise standard, however, can become a citywide issue, as you've heard, as more applications for outdoor amplified sound come forward. We've recently had two outdoor amplified sound applications, one now can, conditionally permitted in Sheldon area and one pending in Old Town. In both cases, it's a noise that's the focus of the complaints. The land issue of outdoor event centers now being condition allowed in certain residential zones, excuse me, was brought to my attention by neighbors experiencing ramifications of such a venue. I see no reason or purpose for allowing, for permitting for-profit commercial outdoor event centers to be established or operated in any, any residential zone. As you've heard, it's just not about noise. It's about folks being subjected to traffic, parking, littering, potential loss of home value, and even non-compliance with conditions of approval. I'm here tonight in my capacity as planning commissioner, in support of the community and asking you to direct staff to proceed in implementing option two, staff report. Now, when it comes to noise standards, that's, that's, that's a tricky and sticky subject. The noise levels say 50 decibels up to 10 o'clock at night. Well, you got to understand that those noise levels are based upon ambient noise. Ambient noise and amplified sound are two different animals. Ambient noise is basically white noise. You hear it all day long. You don't pay attention to it. It's just kind of there. But when it comes amplified sound, it's, it's the type and the characteristics. It's tone, it's pulsive, it's repetitive, and it carries. And it's usually done in the evenings. And if it's a residential zone abutting it or down the road from it, they're gonna be impacted. We question, as the planning commission, whether this noise standards was adequate in providing noise attenuation for nearby residential uses. It's difficult to say what the upper level should be. I, I can't deny that. We, we discussed it at planning commission ad infinitum. And that's why we came, we asked for direction and, for you folks. But the one thing we do know, the current level of 50 decibels has produced complaints from two different venues in two different areas of town. And now the third strikes. It's not outdoor, but it certainly is escaping and penetrating the neighborhoods, if I may.
If you could wrap it up.
I'll work real hard. So one opinion, you can do the study. I don't think we're gonna come to a conclusion. Other option you have is just prohibit outdoor amplified music citywide. We've already got a precedent in the Triangle area. It's not allowed. We can do that. It would give everybody across the city a relief and stop this, stop this from becoming a citywide issue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions?
Nope, thank you. Okay, Randy, and then Sharon Lyons will wrap it up, apparently.
Since I've been retired, I spend a lot of time online. Take your property, you're gonna rent it out at $500 a weekend. That's going on all over the, the city, especially on, on property. You got a beautiful barn indoors with fans, got a little bit of parking, $4.50 a weekend. You've got a nice big green pasture, 20 acres, 10 acres, five acres, two acres. It's going on all over the city. Everybody's hunting for a great venue at the least amount of price. Weddings, receptions, anniversaries, pictures, doesn't matter, the sound. I personally know the owners of Babes. I know the bands that play there. They've played for 30, 40 years. And we were all out running around, played all over. The, the owner, instead of being a manager of his business, was spending the night managing the sound. Because he wants to have an outside venue. But it makes it tough because the neighbors in the areas are calling and he's telling them to drop it, drop it, drop it. Well, sound's gonna carry. Different locations, the sound will carry. So you have something in the country, like let's say Sheldon Inn, those numbers are gonna be different compared to somewhere like Babes. However, Babes is unique because it's a funnel between two buildings. It's sounds going north, it's going south. Compared to another location, let's say the, the, the thing there in Old Town before the city owns, it's a different thing.
Plaza.
The plaza, yeah, thank you. So I think non-commercial should not even be an existent. You want to have a barbecue, you want to have a party, that's once, twice a year, maybe once in every five years, whatever it is. But some of these places are, are having commercial events and not, they're not commercial. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Sharon Lyons?
Good evening, council.
Hi, Sharon.
And everybody on the sides that do all the work. Excuse me. They do work hard. Anyway, the first thing at the top is I am not against any music style at all. They're all welcome, but they should not be in residential areas. We have experienced that in our neighborhood. It's not the people there. It's the amplified music, once again, microphones, DJs, and we have all been in indoor wedding. We've all been in, in indoor wedding, I cannot be by that computer, indoor wedding, that you can hardly speak to the people across the table from you because it's so loud from the DJ. That's inside. But when you're outside, it even goes further than that. And that's exactly what's happening in our neighborhood. It's a residential area and it should not be having a commercial for money event. As these things have already been mentioned before, but once again, parking, most of these do not have enough parking on road at all. It's, as others have said, it's very dangerous. As others have said, it's very dangerous. Quality of life is the issue for not only our neighborhood, but the whole city, all the neighborhoods in the city. I certainly wouldn't want to be in a RD3 or RD5 and have someone down the street having wedding parties in their backyard, even if they were small. It's just should not be allowed in any neighborhood in the city. My favorite option at this point is number two. I don't see how option one should even be considered, because that's what's happening now, and they're not even, there's no CUPs on them, there's no licenses, as far as I know. They're just doing it, and it's been going on for a long time. Option one to me is out. Number three, I thought of an instance, it happens about a couple of times a year, no outdoor amplified sound. We had a couple of times, quite a ways away, a single drum, pound, pound, that way for over a half hour, and just the drum. We don't know what was going on, but we're certainly going to investigate the next time we hear it. We're going to get in our car and find out where it is and report it to code enforcement. That, to me, is not an option three, is not even a consideration either. So I would favor option two and not allow them anywhere in the city, in the neighborhoods of the city of Elk Grove. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Okay, I have no one else signed up to speak, and so I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity, and I will use the chair's prerogative to lead off the discussion, and just say, I don't know how we've made it this far and not had this be an issue. And why it was ever allowed to be in the code as a conditionally permitted use, especially in the super-low-density residential. I mean, as Sharon said, could you imagine being in an RD3 neighborhood and you have commercial events going on next door? And then out in the rural area, especially out on Mackey Road, I mean, Mackey's not set up to handle the traffic of the residents that live there, let alone the people taking the kids to school or these commercial-type events. I know that the particular user that they're referencing applied for a TUP and was denied, and is currently applying for a CUP. Do we have any existing uses where they've applied for a CUP and have been successful? Would there be any legal non-conforming uses?
Not that we're aware of. We just stated that in the staff report to, in case there were, that we weren't aware of, that would be a non-legal or a legal non-conforming use after, if it's the will of the council go with option two.
Okay. So, I mean, I could see on an AG 20, AG 80, something like that, that maybe they've got some sort of event center or winery, or, you know, something where they want to have some concerts. But to drop it into these neighborhoods to where you can't even think, that doesn't make any sense to me at all. So I'm definitely in favor of option two. Now, when it gets to the noise standards, that's a little dicier for me. I think, I think we're just going to start pulling on threads of a sweater if we start trying to analyze, well, what about applying it here, and what about this level there and that level? And that makes it then harder when people come in to apply to get accurate information because it's not a one-size-fits-all. Now, they've got to see, well, where are you located? Is that on this side of that line, or that side of this line, or, you know? And so I think it's just a problem. And then, just as kind of an aside, I'll say, where I live, I get football games at Elk Grove High School, I get concerts and parties and things in Elk Grove Regional Park, I get events at St. Joseph's, and frankly, I enjoy it. Because that, to me, when I hear that, that's people out living. It's people out enjoying life, and that makes me a little happier, so. But I don't have to, it's not in my neighbor's yard. He has parties, and I go, man, I hope they get done by 10 o'clock. So that's where I'm at. I think leave the sound thing alone. It's, for the most part, it's served the city well. It's at least a tangible, measurable, identifiable standard that can be applied. It's easy to give people accurate information in the front end, but there's no reason we should be allowing commercial event centers within residential neighborhoods.
I agree.
I agree.
Second, is that a motion?
I agree as well, and I think that, you know, to your point, it's, sound is subjective, so I think if we started pulling on that thread, some, you know, people are going to find it offensive regardless of, let's say, if we lowered to 50, you're still going to find people offending it, so, being offended by it. So option two, I think, is the best.
Yep, option two.
Second.
Okay, that's your action. On to the last item of the evening.
It's item 10.5, consider an ordinance amending Elk Grove Municipal Code, JEPRA 1.12, administrative citations related to cannabis cultivation and accompanying resolutions on the scheduled fees for administrative citations and for authorizing CCSD fire department staff as code enforcement officers during 4th of July season.
It's kind of a hodgepodge of an item here. We got a little marijuana, we got fireworks.
A little bit of everything. So, good evening, Vice Mayor, members of the council. My name's Rosa Tapia. I'm your code enforcement manager. A quick overview of the item before you this evening. This item replaces the current schedule of fines, modernizing department names. We used to be called code, or community enhancement, we're now code enforcement, so we're updating that, and enforcement practices. It also establishes the ability granted by state law to immediately issue administrative citations for illegal cultivation of cannabis. And it clarifies administrative citation, that administrative citations may be issued for multiple counts of the same violation on the same day. And lastly, it designates CCSD fire staff as enforcement officers to issue administrative citations for fireworks enforcement. A little background, in 2009, the city council adopted ordinance number 7-2009, creating Elk Grove Municipal Code Chapter 112 for administrative citations. Chapter 112 provides city staff the ability to issue administrative citations rather than criminal citations for municipal code violations. It also allows flexibility in managing the processing of fines and appeals processes available to alleged violators, and it provides the city with the ability to develop a plan for correcting violations. As required by Chapter 112, in 2005, the city council adopted Resolution 2005-151 that established the current fine schedule. In most cases, administrative citations are issued after the notice and order, in most cases, administrative citations are issued after the notice and order is issued and opportunity to correct is provided. Most violations are corrected after the notice and order is issued and before any fee or fine is assessed. Demonstrating that, 90% of our violations are corrected at the notice and order stage. This high level of voluntary compliance usually results in administrative citations being a tool of last resort and only being used in about 8% of our cases. Administrative citations become an effective tool in the first step in the enforcement process when a violation involves specifically public safety concerns. So starting with Chapter 112, the proposed amendment relating to the cannabis cultivation, Assembly Bill 2164 was signed into law in September of 2018 and became effective in January of 2019. This amended the government code to specifically allow cities to forego the notice and order process for violations specifically related to building, plumbing, electrical, health and safety, or zoning requirements. Cannabis falls under a zoning requirement slash violation. This new law does require an agency to provide notice and opportunity to correct if the cannabis related violation specifically meets one of the following three exceptions, in that is a tenant would be in possession of the property, the lease or rental agreement prohibits the cultivation of cannabis, and the property owner did not know that the tenant was illegally cultivating or nothing, no property inspection, or property manager ever found or noticed Moving on to the update of schedule of administrative fines, staff does recommend, there are several reasons why staff recommends or proposes updating the administrative citation schedule of fines. Resolution 2005-151 originally was written with the assumption that each city department would do their own enforcement. Currently, the police department and code enforcement perform all enforcement of the municipal code. And lastly, it's necessary to bring up-to-date the 2005 schedule of fines because of not current department names and old municipal code sections that no longer exist. We are not proposing that the fines change. They are proposed to remain, as you see on your screen, 100, 200, 500, and 1,000 for any discharge violations. So it's just a mere update. Additionally, staff's practice has generally been to treat violation, multiple violations over multiple days as a single violation when enforcing the code. This update proposes a practice where code enforcement would no longer issue a single fine against properties where multiple violations exist, but instead issue a fine per instance of violation. This enforcement practice helps deter violations of the code and enhance penalties for violations of significant magnitude. Some examples of that are if a code enforcement officer shows up to a property and there's three inoperable vehicles, right now, what we currently do is we issue one fine for all three vehicles. The practice would change for, again, the significant magnitude cases, repeat violators, we would now be issuing a fine per vehicle. Similar, if we had a substandard housing case, we would issue it for multiple, we would issue it per violation. Additionally, for illegal cannabis cultivation, we would issue it per plant. Staff's ultimate goal in taking on a more aggressive enforcement is to gain compliance using administrative fine process. And lastly, staff recommends adopting a resolution granting CCSD fire staff the authority to enforce the city's fireworks code. Designating the CSD, the ability to issue administrative citations allows for expedient handling of fireworks enforcement and investigation, and all the handling of the administrative citation issuance as far as appeals would remain with the city, the processing and appeals process. With that, I'm available for questions.
Very good. Any questions for Rosa? No? Very good staff report. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this point, I'll open the public comment opportunity. We have one member of the public diehard left. Does she wish to speak on this item?
I don't know.
Apparently not. We will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity, and move to council deliberation direction.
Introduce somebody for reading by substitution.
I'm sorry, I do, I do have-
Oh, my gosh.
I think, I think the fines are, I think the fines is too low. I think the fines is too low.
Councilmember Suein, I think the fines are too low, too, but they're capped by state law.
Oh, okay. Well, then-
Introduce-
He gets paid the big bucks.
That's why.
All right, thank you. Plus, thereby changing it where they can do multiple violations rather than one they've done in the past.
I know, but I heard that as an option, therefore, you know, so it could have gone the other way, right? We could have steep fines.
Counselor member Wen started motion. Introduce and read the full reading by substitution of title only, and ordinance amending the Elk Grove Municipal Code Chapter 1.12 related to administrative citations, exempt and-
Second.
Motion two.
Second.
Motion three.
Second.
All right, we'll do all three motions at once. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's carry. Without further business, we'll adjourn the meeting at 10:29.